Hi, welcome. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Obviously, I am not Kathy Codian. I'm Elaine, I'm the vice chair. Kathy will be back with us at the next meeting. So first, we're in business, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I just want to remind everyone that participation is and always will be voluntary.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens comments. Do we have any citizens comments tonight? Alright, seeing none, we will move on to our next bit of business, which is a student recognition. So we have some guests with us here tonight.
We do, so we're going to ask Walter and Acting Principal Steve Colonnay to come up to the table, please. Thank you. Oh no, I don't have my phone. She was just saying we should get a picture of you. So every year, I'll start and I'll tee it up for Mr. Colonnay. So every year, the Worcester County Superintendent's Roundtable recognizes what they deem to be its finest. And this year, Walter was named, was put forward, and we had a lovely lunch in Worcester, and it was just with so much pride that I was able to sit with you and have a lovely meal with you and get to know you. And the room was just full of such bright, articulate, professional, young people, and it was just a real pleasure to have you there. So I know Mr. Colonnay is going to just mention one or two things, and then Walter, we'd like you to talk a little bit about yourself and tell us a little bit about you, okay? So let's turn it over to Mr. Colonnay.
It was an honor to go. I really enjoyed it. It was for my first time, so it was nice. I didn't get to go when I was a kid. I'm just going to read what the scholar profile was that they, part of the process. Walter Stadolneck, did I say that?
Yep.
Good. Has taken the most rigorous course load available at Neshoba over the past four years. If a class was available to be taken in AP, he took it. If it was only offered at the accelerated level, he was truly interested in the class, he took it. His goal since being in Neshoba has not been to obtain highest GPA possible, but to learn and enjoy that experience. If not in the classroom learning, if not in the classroom learning, he could be found working with the robotics team, with any of their robots, playing his trombone with the symphonic band, or designating, or designing, I'm sorry, digital art on his computer. Possesses a curious nature combined with a powerful intellect, with a kind, welcoming approach to all he interacts with. Walter's a wonderful person who is well-liked by both his peers and adults alike.
And I loved your quote, that you, if you turn over to the first page, it's got your favorite quote there, and maybe if you could read that to us, because I just thought that that was so telling, and that kind of represents, I think, how you think about things.
It's in my book.
It's right there. It's right there on the front.
Yeah.
Oh, right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we don't make mistakes, just happy little accidents.
Happy little accidents, I love that. So Walter, just spend a minute and tell us what your plans are, what, I know that we've had that discussion, but maybe just illuminate everybody around the room and tell us what your hopes are.
Yeah, so sort of, the major that I'm looking at right now is biomedical engineering. And so, yeah, one of the things that sort of caused me to consider that is being on the robotics team the last, like, three or so years. And so that's been like a really big thing for me. And I just came from robotics, actually.
That you?
But yeah, so, yeah, that's just really fun, getting to, getting to know that, that group of sort of STEM-oriented engineering-type people, and sort of working together to tackle these, these problems, and sort of grow as a community as well as a, as well as enhancing your engineering skills. See, I think that's definitely sort of led me to want to pursue a engineering-type career.
And schools that you're looking at?
Some of the top schools are BU, I did apply to MIT, Columbia, Northeastern, and WPI. So, yeah.
Wow.
So we need to go back to most of those, so yeah, so that's a...
Is there one that you'd really like to go to? Or all of them? You can take it out, it's an alma mater here. Well, that's exciting. And I knew, I know that you really like robotics, and so I talked to Mr. Fortiani, and I said, you know, is there something that you can think of? And Mr. Colonnay and I were talking about, like, what can we, what can we give you tonight that, you know, we think that you might really appreciate or remember tonight with, or the fact that you've won this prestigious honor? And so, I went to Lowe's. And so, we have something to present to you here, and what I think is really important is that you notice that it has your name on top as well, so I'll just make my way around here.
Man luggage.
We thought it was the perfect gift for you. And you'll notice that you have your grave name here as well, so you'll always know it's yours, okay? So we thank you so much, and we are so proud, and I said to your mom this morning, you know, like, you represent the very best from Neshoba, and we're just really, really proud of you, so we thank you so much. So I think we'll probably get a quick picture in here. Yeah, that's the way, you start calling it too. So do you want to come around here? And actually, we'll put you right in the middle. I bet you will. Awesome. Thank you. Mom and dad, thank you, congratulations to you both, too.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you so much, and I just want to say, as a graduate of WPI in biomedical engineering, I wish you the best of luck, and I don't know anyone on the admissions staff, but if you need anything, or if you need any advice, let me know.
So his dad also went to WPI, and he's actually been accepted already.
Just waiting to hear from the other school to make the decision.
Alright, well, good luck, and best wishes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Great, things are...
Thank you, thanks for joining us tonight.
Alright, that was a nice way to start a meeting. Next is school committee chair updates, and I do have a few things for everyone. So I have another update from Attorney Norris. He sent me via email this letter this morning, will enter into the record as well. Says, "Dear Elaine, I am writing to provide you with an update on the investigation. The information gathering phase of the investigation is essentially complete, and I have just a few follow-up items to finish. I am working on organizing the information I have collected, and I am drafting a report. I am looking forward to our scheduled meeting in the first part of February, at which we will be able to discuss my findings. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to let me know." So, Alita, I'll give that to you. And I have an update from myself on that same topic. Attorney Norris has asked for a list of our upcoming school committee meetings. I want to remind everybody that right now, only Attorney Norris knows what is in his report, or is going to be in his report. It may warrant an executive session, reductions, like, we don't know that yet, but we should have his recommendation on what that will look like in advance of our February 12th meeting, in order to be able to address the issue at that meeting. So that is our update on the investigation. Are there any questions on that?
Yes. He referenced a meeting, this is going to be the meeting with maybe you and the chair?
He will prob, yes, we will have a pre-meeting that sort of says, I think you should have an executive session. It won't necessarily be like, here's what hap, you know, here's all the contents of the report, but we should handle this in executive session. Nope, this is good to go publicly, okay, done. Purely so that we can post it and follow all the rules of open meeting law.
So will we decide at that point, or after that point, how we will disseminate the findings, whether it's a condensed version, or modified version, or is that, is that something that has to be discussed amongst the committee, or just amongst the point people? How does that work?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
I think we're, I think we're still thinking about that. If you have thoughts on it, feel free to send them to me. But we're still taking his lead on most things, since he's the only one that knows what the content is at this point, but I think by February 12th, whether it's a discussion among the whole committee, or whether maybe there's something clear in there that's obvious, I just don't know yet.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Okay. Next, Mrs. Hera at the high school had invited school committee members to student presentations last week, where the topics were about persuasive speeches about topics at the high school that were important to them. It was things like start times, instituting school choice, what a new building might look like, and I know that Kathy and Mary were able to attend, so could you just say a few words about that experience?
Sure. I'm glad to have the opportunity to publicly thank Ms. Hera and her senior English class for inviting us, and I know there were some school committee members who weren't able to, I mean, you teach classes, and so you weren't able to be there, but she also taped it. And so, what I found was that it was, and so Kathy and I went, the scene, and also there were, there was administration and other faculty there, who was great about this. The students really had done research on topics that were interesting to them, and they presented so cogently and persuasively. Some presented at that particular time, others had done a video, but all of them stood up afterwards and answered questions from their peers in the classroom, and also from us. And we were able to offer some answers, maybe some different perspectives, especially Kathy, as former principal of the Shoba, could give some history in regard to this. The topics that we saw on Tuesday, we could go Tuesday, solar panels, school choice, creative land use in Lancaster, open campus, a new school building, and advisory groups on the high school level. So this was such an opportunity for us to see student voice, and to hear student voice in the dialogue with the students. Also, this particular class got dual credit from Quinn Sigeman, and so, at this particular time, their teacher had, Ms. Hera, had received their transcripts. So it really was a thrill, because she gave them out afterwards. The Quinn Sigeman part of the course had already been completed, that's how they were able to get their, their grades. So they had their grade, which was also their GPA, and to see the class, you know, she did a little, just a little ceremony, gave each one, here's her transcript. And it was, it was really fun to be there and to watch the students looking at a college transcript. We also thanked them because, you know, they're, they've been at the Shoba for four years. They've become, as well as the faculty, the real experts on the Shoba and what changes are, you know, should be there, so they were leaving some of their wisdom behind, so to speak, and that was really moving, too, so I was really, it was a privilege to be there.
Oh, thank you. Yes, and there is an email with a link to some videos, if anybody hasn't gotten that already. Speaking of student voice, so Mrs. Dume and some other teachers at the high school have invited school committee members to attend and listen in on the student voice PLTs that are coming up. I believe there's four dates in the next two months, and the first of which is next Wednesday, the 5th, it's an early release day, so it'll be starting about 11:30. Quick show of hands, is anyone planning on attending that? And I should be able to as well.
Good.
I need to give her an RSVP on that. And then finally, I do have some CPAC events to announce. I'll do it under subcommittee reports, but I know on the agenda, CPAC wasn't listed, so I just wanted to give you a heads up that I'll do that at that time. And that is it from me, so, Ibi, student, oh, sorry, just question.
Do you have the student voice dates that you could maybe send to us?
Yeah, I can send them to you.
And I'll try to, I would like to attend the next one, but if not the next one, maybe the one after.
Sure.
And it's relevant to the policy subcommittee, so.
Alright, any, sorry, any other questions? Alright, Ibi, take it away.
Sure. So this week, in Lancaster, tomorrow, the basketball teams are playing both the boys and girls against Fowler, and that'll be at 3:30, and then the boys are at 4:45. That picture is Luther Burbank, they still do positive sign Thursday, that's one of my favorites so far, remind you to be silly, love that one. And it's also starting to be enforced, Ms. Rocha does it at the high school as well, which is also cool. Also Lancaster, there's a spelling bee on February 3rd. Last week, the honor roll recipients had a breakfast in the morning, and the jazz ensemble played for them. In Stowe, there is a Valentine's Day dance on February 7th at the middle school. The school musical this year is Frozen Junior, so rehearsals are underway, and the show will be at the end of March. More basketball games tomorrow versus Tejano at home, and the grade four band and choir concert is February 4th at 7 o'clock. In Bolton, so those picture there are the first graders, they performed, I believe it's called The Mitten, so that, the Twitter post that that was their first of many performances. Bolton is also planning their first winter walk to school day, which will be February 5th. They're partnering with the Bolton Police Department, Department of Public Works, and Massachusetts Safety Routes to School, so they'll meet at a park, and eventually teachers will bring them to school altogether, stopping at both Florence Sawyer and Emerson. There's also a basketball game tomorrow here versus Troy. At the high school, first sports, tomorrow, the swim and dive team have their league championships. There's a wrestling match tonight in Quabin. Girls' basketball Friday at 6:00 versus Westboro, and on Saturday, boys hockey is playing at 4:00. The music department is preparing for their competitions. MAJE, which is the jazz festival, and Micah is concert band and concert choir. The Music Honor Society is also planning a 24-hour rock-a-thon, which will be held in the upper gym at Neshoba. That is March 27th into the 28th, so music will be playing non-stop, and all benefits are going to Really for Life, which is the American Cancer Society. Finally, if you know anyone looking to get rid of an old prom dress, Neshoba Drama is collecting them. If you have any, you can contact Emily DeMayo, there's her email, or you can just drop them off at the high school in room 213.
Thank you.
Thanks, so then superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. So the high school visioning update, Jake Foster spent some more time in the past couple of weeks at the high school visiting classrooms, attending student presentations, and working with high school leadership on next steps for the high school visioning process. Next week, he will help lead a faculty meeting for all high school staff to introduce the MSBA process, and work with faculty on visioning for teaching and learning at the high school moving forward. The visioning committee also completed and submitted two major grant applications for this work in consultation with Jake, to help the facilitation of this work. We didn't have the standard down, that should be, oh, I bet you you do. Do you have it, 1, 2, 3, 4? Yeah, okay, good enough, thanks. That work is really exciting, it's really moving forward. We'll see if we get either of the grants to help us with this additional work, some foundation grants that are out there that are available for us, and Mary Marata and Kim Early have been working with Jake to, and Todd as well, to prep those applications and send them off. And so, the team met again today, I believe, with the department chairs, I think, you're here, Steve, so I think that that meeting went very, very well, so that was great. And then, I believe, next week, that department chairs and Jake with the team will move out to the full staff on Thursday, and I believe that they're looking at doing breakout sessions around and just continuing to work through this. I think it's, you know, I think it can be a challenge if you're not used to thinking beyond your classroom and trying to think to that next level, whatever that looks like. And I think that our folks are doing just a tremendous job, I'm getting really positive feedback from them, and saying that they're just really enjoying the process, so that's terrific. I also have prepped some memos that, you know, we'll send out in the next couple of weeks, or one before this weekend, because one of the things that was asked of me is, can you just kind of give us a snapshot of the SOI and some of the key deficiencies of the building? So I've taken, taken that apart with the SOI, listed those, and those will head out probably either tomorrow afternoon or Friday. So really good work happening in that area. The APC Board of Directors, I continue to meet with them regularly. That's a key point for us, the Aspet Valley Collaborative, because we do send a fair number of children to that particular collaborative, so it's always exciting to see the work that they're doing and the work that they've got in front of them. I've been meeting, as I always do every year, with school councils throughout the district in the last couple of weeks. I've met with Hale, the high school, and Luther Burbank, and just want to always thank our parents, you know, sometimes I think we, they tend to get lost in the shuffle of all the work that we do, but you know, when you look at them sitting at the games, or the concerts, or, you know, around school council tables, and, you know, you're just always reminded how important their voice is at the table as well. I know you talk a lot about student voice, but I think parental voice is so critical, too. So I really appreciate everybody who volunteers and takes part on our school councils. Budget workshop was just this weekend. Thank you to all of you for coming and spending Saturday morning with us. It was the night we started on time and we finished on time, that was a real treat, to be finished right at noon, it was like three minutes of noon. So thanks to everyone for that. We'll do a bit of an update tonight on where that's sitting at. Rich discussion, I thought, great clarifying questions, so I think it was a very successful workshop. Special note of thanks to Pat, of course, and Michelle, who do Yowen's work during this time of the year, to pull it all together. The budget process, we continue to put forward efforts to bring the overarching number, budget number in line with what we feel is palatable for our communities. This evening, we'll present a number that's different from the number that we presented on Saturday, as you start to see, is kind of trying to work our way down, we're nowhere near where we want to be, but we, I mean, we've got a couple of weeks to get to where we need to be. But I also point out that some of the asks that you heard about the other day just are not going to be able to go forward, because the money just isn't going to be there. The principals and district administration continue to meet regularly, we met, and at this time of year, we meet for a lot of our days, just discussing budget, and a lot of our principals will meet separately, like, today, the elementary principals met as a collective group, and the middle school principals met as a collective group to try to work through and whittle down and find reductions where they can, or redeployment of staff, or whatever that looks like here, as we try to get to the number that we're aiming for. We continue to look at student population in general, then we look at specifically to each school and each grade level, because there's always ebbs and flows in that as well, and you can see where you can take some stuff from here and move them over here, whatever that, that might look like, just as a redeployment, but simple, simple redeployments, not major redeployments. We continue to, to look at that and to discuss equity and consistencies across the district, because that's still really critical, no matter what we do, we still want the children to be consistent in the educational and the instruction that they receive, whether you're in Lancaster, or Stowe, or Bolton. So that's still at the forefront of all of, all of the work that we do. So we anticipate being closer to a final number within the next two school committee meetings, so that's what you'll see, and tonight, you'll see a bit of a matrix, this is, okay, here's where we're at, and right now, this is what it looks like, you know, of course, for these, that was for Bolton, Lancaster, and Stowe. So we'll present a matrix tonight, and says, here's kind of where we're at. So that's a snapshot of the work in the last, last couple of weeks. Any questions on any of this?
I have a question, so much as I do a suggestion. I know that when I sat on the Hale School Council, Mike, you've sat on a council before, and Mary, you can probably attest to this, as a parent, I always felt like the one who was able to eke out enough time to go to the meetings for so many others who would love to be there but weren't able, and that there was no real mechanism for me as the parent representative to gather information from other parents, so that I could be more of a megaphone as just, as opposed to an individual voice. So I know that my voice is valuable, but I think that there might be an opportunity that we're missing there on the school councils, kind of like the parent survey on the calendar, and things like that, that we kind of sometimes do at the last minute. So I wonder if we could encourage the principals to create a structure to use that parent, not just as one voice, but as a vehicle?
Have you got an idea?
So whether or not it's, you know, they meet once every other week?
I'm not sure.
I think it's every other week we met. Maybe even just like, an email, an email to create for the parent on the, on the council, or some sort of Dropbox for suggestions, something where you're messaging out to parents, you know, hey, the school council meeting is happening, this is the agenda, what might you want me to say, what messages do you have that are relevant, or maybe even any new business? Because I think that parents are aware that the school council exists, they usually delete the email because they can't be there at 3:30.
Yeah.
And so, but they'd still like to participate.
It's interesting, too, the high school one, you know, it was the young man that's his student rep, and it's interesting, because of course, I watched him from Bolton grow up, and now, like, I mean, in his fourth year over there, and he was talking about the building, and he said, you know, he says, yes, I know the class that I have to wear my coat into, and I thought, my goodness, again, it's just so interesting to hear the student, the student voice when you're talking about these kinds of things. So I'll definitely bring that up with the principals, I think that's a really good idea.
Anybody else? I have a question. On the visioning, do you have a broad timeline as to sort of what he's doing when, like, is it six months, is it a year, who will eventually you be talking to, and are any themes starting to emerge?
I think it's too soon to say themes, I think that really, at this stage, they're still really in that organizational mode, you know. We started as a very small group, I think the first meeting, I think there was maybe only six or seven of us around the table, I think that first meeting or two, and then from there, we've kind of grown a little bit larger and a little bit larger, and I think that's really, that was the intent, and to, once we kind of got a flavor, or as you say, themes that have emerged or whatever from the staff, then I think, you know, the next step would be to go out to the community and say, okay, here's a skeleton of what we're seeing, and then, you know, get parent feedback, student feedback, that kind of thing. So I think that there's, they're preparing like timelines, if you will, and I've, I've actually seen the drafts of it, and it's, I think it's well-articulated, and I think he's even, I think what he's going to present on Thursday, too, is the different modules, and how they all work within timelines, so I think there's a couple of different...
The MSBA modules?
Yeah, the MSBA modules, yeah. So I think that, you know, how do you tie all of this together, really? So, yeah, I had thought, too, about the notion, and now that you're saying it, of even having Jake come and present to school community and say, this is the work that we're doing, and this is what it looks like so far, and know that it's a, you know, work in progress, because it really is a work in progress.
Sure.
And, you know, I think even, you know, Steve and I were talking about this earlier, I think the staff even felt more comfortable today, you know, the department chairs, than the first time, because you kind of have to take it and synthesize and process the information, and start to build a foundation of what this is all going to look like. So if that's something that you would, you would like me to do, certainly just feed it to me and let me know, and I can reach out to him and have him come in and do a quick presentation for you, so you know the type of work that's being done. It is exciting, though, and I, that is the feedback that I'm getting from people right now, that they're finding that that's very invigorating, it's very exciting work that they're doing, so it's very exciting.
So, but yeah, are we talking about like, a few more months, a year?
No, I think that, I think that we're looking at trying to pull that education plan together, because we really need that education plan to be with us in like the, in that feasibility stage, so I think that's probably within the next six months to a year.
Okay.
I think that that's, and remember that we are not working with MSBA until June 1st of 2020, so we're just getting the head start on it, saying this is what we're thinking, this is, you know, so there's nothing really codified right now, other than just the fact that this is what we're starting to map out as we move into this. And I want to say again, and I, you know, we have no preconceived notions, like, as a, you know, I mean, if the feasibility study, for example, goes down and isn't, isn't supported, then it's all over with, do you know what I mean? So you don't, you don't know where the process may stop, or, you know, it might be sooner, it might be later, it might not be at all, you know? So I don't think we are going into the saying, hey, this is, this is what we think is going to happen, by any stretch, but we are prepping ourselves so that we're well-prepared and well-aware, and have something very articulate to present, so that's, I think that's our goal right now. Any other questions on that? I will present a little bit more on that when we get to that section. Okay, thanks, thank you.
Alright, moving on to new business, we have a guest here from the Chieftain Press.
We do, yes, we do, and, and Melissa, so come on up, Grace, come on up, Melissa, and you can introduce yourselves. Thank you so much, so nice to see you again. So we had spent some time talking over the last couple of weeks, and I think that, you know, both Melissa and Grace and I, again, I'll have you introduce yourselves in a minute, present such a wonderful energy, and as we were talking about the Chieftain Press, and the role that it plays, and some thoughts that we had, certainly more, they had more than I had, it was exciting to me, and I thought, you know what, I'd love for you to see what they're thinking is, and where they're at, and I think that, I think you've just got a lot of, a lot of goodness to bring forward to us. So Grace, why don't you start by introducing yourself?
Hello, I'm Grace Fiori, I'm a senior at Neshoba, and I'm also the chief editor for our school newspaper, the Chieftain Press, and I recently wrote an article, and we really sparked this great conversation with Superintendent Clancy about how do we improve communication and engagement between the student body and, you know, faculty, staff, and administrators, and we really wanted to start a positivity column, or program, if you will, to kind of feature that amazing work that's going on in the community.
I'm Melissa Polyprako, I teach English at the high school, and I am the advisor for the Chieftain Press, so I work with Grace. Right, so this sparked from really good conversation that we had, and we were talking about the idea of this column that we could start, like, Did You Know? Because there are so many great things happening at the high school, and I think oftentimes, either our community isn't aware of it, or even the students that are there at the school aren't really aware of it, and we have services and things happening that kids might not know about, so as a student journalist, technically, so Grace is like duty and obligation to inform our public. So Grace and I brainstormed a couple of ideas, so we're going to throw those out there today, and say a few more things, and then Grace will share something with you as well. So possible future topics for articles, the overview of the MSBA process, which you were just talking about, Grace had an opportunity to meet with Jake Foster today.
Oh, great, I didn't know that that happened, so that's wonderful.
Yeah. And so, we were able to chat for a little bit, because there might be students who have heard things here and there, but it's like, what does that look like? What's that all about? but it's like, what does that look like, what's that all about? And so that would probably be Grace's first article. And then another option, too, would be the crisis team that we have in place. And after a conversation with Superintendent Clenchey, you know, students either don't know about it, or know about it and don't know how to access it, or don't know who at the school they should go to, but we have this set up, and they should be able to access that and understand what that's about, if they should need it.
I thought you'd just speak to that for half a second, and that was one of the things, of course, that came out, is because as adults, you say, okay, we're ready to put the crisis team into play, and because, and everybody, like, the adults all know who's on that crisis team. Excuse me, as when I was sitting and speaking with some of the students, it was interesting, and I was saying this to both Melissa and Grace, somebody said right away, oh, I know exactly who's on that team, and went through and listed everybody, and somebody said, I didn't even know that team existed, and somebody else said, well, actually, I participated in it. So it was such a wide range, and I thought, this is a perfect topic to talk about, so that people do know it's there, and when it's activated, you can access it, and what it can offer to you. So I was thrilled that you picked up on that, and we're looking to run with that, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, we also wanted to illuminate some of the social emotional learning initiatives that are taking place at both high school and the district, as well as the high school students that are now working in the after-school programs throughout the district. And also focusing on what exactly is done during late starts, because we get to sleep in for two hours, but that's not necessarily the case. And there's some really amazing work happening, changing and shaping the curriculum and the structure of classrooms. And so we're also welcome to exploring topics and suggestions, and, you know, leaders in the community that are really interesting that you would love to showcase as well. And so, you know, we're really fortunate to have various modes of communication with students and members of the community through social media, our website, and then we also have a digital magazine, so I wanted to, we have some print editions.
We do some over that way.
We have now. And so-
This is for us old people.
We developed it as kind of a visually engaging way to showcase the writing and the art through the digital photography classes and interviews with students and teachers. So we've done about five issues so far.
And the goal is, this is just a quick photocopy of that, and we would like to, for the next issue, to get this done professionally, you know, limited. It comes out as a magazine, it's a magazine. Through, the platform is Canvas, and then we upload to Issue, it creates this magazine, and then we can print it professionally. So Grace is very humble, and won't say this, but I'll say this, that Grace designed this entire magazine, and the articles are from our journalism program and from the artists in our school. But this is sort of something that Grace started and has designed, which I think is really, it's really beautiful, you can see, and this is just a quick photocopy, so when we get this professionally printed, so stay tuned for the next one.
Talent.
So that's really it for us, I don't know if anyone has any questions about the journalism program or anything that we mentioned tonight.
Yeah, I'm really interested in your program, it's great, and I will say that my son took journalism as a freshman this past semester, and he loved it. So I'm selfishly wondering how you can progress, but I'm also just wondering, you know, how, you said that you do four of these a year?
Just about, it's like every quarter.
The magazine, but you have a website that you are constantly updating?
Yes.
Yes.
So you have, I mean, what is the scope of the journalism program? I know that there's Journalism 1, then where do kids go from there?
So it's, there's usually a Journalism 2 program, and so that'll kind of intersect in various other courses that they offer. Sometimes it's an English course, sometimes it's interactive, it's focused on technology. And then there's also video broadcasting, so if you're interested in like, it's a news program and writing scripts. So it's changing in terms of what the schedule looks like, but that's basically the core, so there is an advanced class, and then you just sort of work your way up.
I see.
And often, students that start in the journalism class end up moving toward broadcast and becoming lead anchors and script writers and chief editors, and the Journalism 2 class, the Journalism 2 students will sometimes be in the same class with the J1 students, and so they serve as the editor in that class and the mentor, the student mentor for the new journalists. As we kind of, if that sparks an interest for them, we want to have them follow through. We've had several students go on to broadcast and film and journalism, so.
And you guys broadcast at lunch, is that right?
We do.
Once a week?
Once a week, yeah, every Friday, they've been doing great this year, so.
That's awesome. I wonder if there could be some sort of a hyperlink or something, maybe just calling emails to your, your website or your publication, or head out tweets, so I guess I could follow you if I did that. But, yeah, a little bit more publicity, because I think what you guys are doing is great.
Thank you.
And I do tweet, not that, I have a Twitter account, I don't tweet that much, but I really enjoy reading, because I follow you, and reading where I learn things, even about food, talked about Root's Restaurant, which is such an awesome place, and if people don't know about it, you should. It's Limousine, isn't it?
Yeah.
And so, and I only learned about it recently, and then I read about this, you know, the way you had described it, and I thought, this is right on. I can, I can find out things about the high school, but also about the neighborhoods around, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think I just want to say, too, you know, Grace, I just, I'm so appreciative of, you know, the amount of communication that you maintained with me there for a couple of weeks, I'm so appreciative of that, and I thank you very much for that. And I think that, and I think I said this to you, too, I really appreciate your level of positivity and your sense of service to the community and sense of service to journalism, and I think that that just really stands you in such a good stead. And, you know, I'm really excited to see what happens with you beyond Grade 12, because I think you're, you're on a wonderful trajectory right now. And your writing, and I said this to you before, your writing is amazing, I love reading your writing, so. And I think, Melissa, to you, too, I mean, I know that we're seeing you tonight in this particular role, but, you know, I say to you, too, your level of innovation and sense of creativity and your open mind and open heart, I'm so appreciative of that, and your, the passion you have for doing the work and doing work for children, you know, just, I just respect that and I appreciate it. Grace, thank you for coming tonight, too, you know, I know for both of you, it kind of takes a time out of, you know, your life to come here, but just so appreciated, and I think it's just really valuable for our school community to hear the work that you're doing and the work that's in store for us that we're going to look forward to.
Yeah, stay tuned.
I know, I know that would be a really nice wrap-up, but I have a question. So this is amazing, and I would like more people to see it. So what channels do you think are the most effective to communicating to people your age, and does that matter whether it's your age to your age, or if it's adults communicating to high school kids?
I have to say, social media, good and the bad, right, and then also kind of using social media as a tool to connect people to different platforms. So this is published on Issue, which is, you know, it's a website, and it basically formats it into a magazine, so it's an experience. You get to click the button, and it looks like you're flipping the page. So it's visually engaging, it's interesting. We try to put a lot of graphics, we try to put images in there, so that you're kind of drawn in, but you're also getting the information. So it's just presented a different way that's more engaging, and I think that's more in tune with what social media has kind of shaped us to perceive. We like fast images and videos and whatnot. But also, you know, the website is nice, people like to read something, like to sit down and flip through it, and I think that's, it's a valuable resource for anybody to reach teens or anyone.
Keep up the good work. Thank you for all you do, both of you. Thank you, nice to have you here tonight.
Thank you. Sharing this, I started a Twitter account just so I could follow school councils. It helps. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the-
Two, actually.
Yeah, the High School Robotics Traveler Request, we're going to put that up and hold and table that till the next meeting, because they need a little bit more time with the paperwork. And then the Vaping Update, unfortunately, Lisa Gilbicki, our Head of Nursing and Wellness, has the flu. Yes, even nurses get the flu, and so she's unable to be here. It's a really important topic, so we're going to put that on the next agenda as well. If anyone does have questions or things that you're hoping that she'll cover as part of that, you can send them to me and let me know. Obviously, she needs time to recover, but maybe we can expedite some of that, because this is a really important issue.
And you've got the presentation in your package.
Yes, which brings us to Extended Learning Camp Update. So Mrs. Rayco.
That's a hard act to follow. That issue, I'm, I'm going to make it happen.
Your articles in the Stone Independent have been very well received, I will say.
I know, I'm delighted to be here, I was here recently for the budget workshop, so much of what, I didn't say that much then, so I can now fill in some blanks, and I do have some leave behind, so I'm going to make those available, and I'll reference them and pick them up as you wish. So I am thrilled to be here. Our goal continues to be offering an extended learning program that is self-sustaining while providing enrichment programs that augment before and after-school care. And I've been, I was thinking about some images today as I was getting ready for the presentation, and I thought about a kaleidoscope, because every day is different in extended learning. I mean, we have what I call a creative structure, but it changes based upon the personalities, the time of year, all of that. And so I like to think of it as a kaleidoscope of learning. And I believe that what distinguishes us and what I hope to convey tonight is really the pride that our staff and children take, both of them, in exploring and growing. It's pretty amazing. Just for, today, for example, when I went down, I taught yoga earlier, and this little boy, honestly, he was knitting a hat for himself. I mean, seriously, he didn't want the pom-pom, but he was knitting a hat, because his buddy Logan had done the hat the day before. A guy, I love that, you know, just, and so that's what I'm talking about, there's this ignition of wonder and excitement, and I think that that's really the basis of social emotional learning. So I'm pleased that that is the district's number-one goal, because it is what we embody as a, as a program. We'll go to the next slide, and I do a quick snapshot, I believe Mike likes numbers, I think some other people like numbers, too, so I'm going to have us go to the next, oh, I'm sorry, he's sitting right there. Is it this one right here?
Yep. The arrow, the little arrow on the side.
Oh, there we go.
Not in the middle.
There we go.
Yep.
Yeah, maybe. Maybe I can't see, maybe I need to have new glasses.
It's very small.
Push something.
Was it one?
Oh. Well, there you go.
Oh, help.
So it's that one, okay, good. All right, now let's do it. It's, it's a good slide. So we know that numbers are important, not going to, what do we have? We have another number. So I'm going to just preface by saying, I think about our staff, and it is an interesting way to think of it. It's really like a family, because the students come to us sometimes after a very long day at school, and our staff really embraces them as family. And so I think it's useful to take a look at the numbers, mostly so that we can appreciate the dynamics of our program. Bolton, and I'm going to just kind of go across very, very quickly. It's identified by site on the left, and then AM numbers, PM numbers, and I only identify kindergarten because of the ratio piece that's important in our staffing model, and then the number of site coordinators. So our desired staff-to-student ratio is 1 to 12. With Kindies, I like to call my Kindies, it really should be 1 to 10. Bolton, our largest site, it's pretty straightforward, is our center school site with a pretty robust waitlist at this point. And yet, the percentage of kindergartens is slightly less than the other two sites, but it's still a lot, it's still a good amount of numbers. With that said, we've agreed to move forward with a third site coordinator for that site, which I spoke about briefly at the Budget Workshop, and that's going to be an important position to fill. I put it up there because I have someone tentatively, but we need someone with more experience. And I have to acknowledge our high school aides. Honestly, I can't tell you how great they are, I really can't. I mean, every time I meet with them, and I have Michael over there on the right, left-hand side, very excited to see him, he's a wonderful asset to the program, and we have a between two and three per site, and they come in at different times because of the sports and whatnot. So that's just important to acknowledge, and I'll tell you a little more about a high school initiative later. Next slide, please. Enrichment Highlights, we have two sort of different opportunities for enrichment through the program. One is our multi-week programs, which I schedule throughout the year, usually six, eight, or 10 weeks, depending upon the given program. Those are reasonably priced to families, they, yeah, we'll stay on that. And I'm not going to read through every single one, but you can see for yourself that there's a variety. I will tell you that yoga, which is what I teach, is free to the students, I'm not going to charge them, because I'm here, and I love to do it. We did bring in, I thought, a really interesting program this winter-spring, I say winter, and then it goes into spring, is a STEM program called Exploring Mind Body, Mind and Science, Body, Mind and Science, and the kids really have liked it. I took, you know, you take a chance sometimes, you hear from the parents, and you try to accomplish what they want to see for their kids, but also what do the kids want, and a lot of times, the kids don't know what they want until they start trying it out. One of the quotes that a parent had written in the survey that we, that I just completed looking at, was, "They gave my kids," meaning the classes, "they gave my kids opportunities to try new things in a low-pressure environment." And I think that's the key, you know, how does a child take risks, if they don't feel they're being judged, you know? And I love that happy, wouldn't the young man say happy mistakes?
Happy accidents.
Happy accidents, I mean, we're making a lot of those. In addition to the multi-week programs, which of course are optional for the children, because we have lots going on, but these are to augment. We also, I bring in performance shows and workshops, again, I'm not going to read them all, but I was excited to find one. On the left side of the screen, you see a woman, lovely woman, Nancy Bell, who's a professional spinner, and she came from the Yama organization, which is, if I can say that, it's Young Audiences of Mass, and she demonstrated spinning with wool from her lambs and her sheep, I mean, it was just unbelievable, and the kids each got to do it, and that was really fun for them. I've also brought in some creative dance and drama, because I think that brings out the individual's personality. Probably the biggest hit so far this year, I say so far, is the Uch Yo-Yo Experience. And the reason I'm bringing that up is, when you first think of a yo-yo, you don't think of social emotional learning, I don't think. Wrong. This guy is all about, that's what he does, he brings groups of kids together and helps them feel comfortable with trying something they've never done before. His name is Brett Uchianis, probably mispronouncing it, he's on the right-hand side. They loved him so much that I brought him in to do workshops, because he does an anti-bullying, he has a whole framework around how to, you know, embrace change and work through things that you can't do. That was, that's been a great, a really lot of fun. To the next screen, I have been doing some growth in the middle school area and a little bit in the high school, even though my program focuses on K through 5. Middle school, we are bringing, for the first time, I think, will be a valuable workshop for our students. It's an interactive workshop called Music, Art, New, and I think that our kids are going to love it. We already have two workshops filled up, we're offering it to all three sites for 7th and 8th graders so that they can get ready for high school. But we'll be using art and music and helping them to look at their SMART goals. I think it's going to be really good, we'll see, it's a, it's a first time for us. And we'll, I'll be checking back with you on that later in the spring. Once again, we're bringing forward the woodworking course, it is a 10-week course, we did offer it last year. It was a pilot, it went very well, we only can have 12 students because of the limitations of the high school, but we got great reviews, and so we're going forward with it again. And high school, this is exciting, we're implementing an AIDS and training program. It became, and this was through a discussion with Todd, who's unfortunately sick tonight, but we were scratching our heads, and I said, I love our high school aides, I want more of them, but we need, you know, and he goes, well, what about, and all of a sudden, it was like, the idea came. So we're doing this training program, it's through an application, we've invited high school students to an information session on February 5th, and we will select 9th and 10th graders who will shadow our juniors and seniors who are in our program for five weeks. It will be non-paid, but it'll be very valuable, and it is, will be a feeder for them to continue, you know, consider education. Is their path, or perhaps not, but certainly learning how to team-build collaboration. So that's a first, and I think it should be well-received, keep you posted on that. Lo and behold, vacation camps are here, oh my, February. Actually, that number's changed, we have 68 students enrolled to date in our February program. That's pretty much, we're almost maxed out. We really took a different approach this year and last year, I don't know if you recall what they used to do, I say they, because I wasn't here then, but the district used to offer a, what was it called, it wasn't science, imagination program. Anyways, I scratched my head, and too much of the survey from the parents said they wanted more diversity, more offerings, I should say. So with that in mind, I've been bringing in different programs- So, with that in mind, I've been bringing in different programs. And in the, in February, we do have a STEM-related program, Evangerina, Nature Exploration, Multi-Sports, Creative Dance, Drama, and Art. Quite a good spread. I'm pleased with it. Babysitting and First Aid Certification Courses for the fifth through eighth graders, full, filled up within three days. Filled up. I could've duplicated it six times. So, there's an interest there, and they will be certified. So, I will bring that back to the April timeframe. April, I'm shifting things up a little bit, because I feel like we wanna reach as many students. And about 60% of our campers come from our program, and about 40, 35, 40% outside the program. So, we're gonna be doing Cook's Corner. I'm, we're bringing in sewing, engineering explorers, robotics. I'm pretty excited about this. Origami and math. Origami and math. There is math with origami, which I wouldn't have known until I found this guy, and he's, has a doctorate from Columbia, who's doing this for me. And learning magic, I've changed that to be join the circus. We're gonna do a join-the-circus program, and we're gonna be offering magic tricks, juggling, balloon twistings, and puppetry. Something kind of fun and a little different, making it fun. And you see Tom down there, who's a wonderful colleague, and I enjoy working with him, and he had offered to do the Cook's Corner this, this April. And again, babysitting. And then, just to wrap it up, because I know that my time is limited, even though I know there are two people who didn't present in front of me, but I can't take that, so I, I will be mindful. Family outreach and communication, making connections and building trust. The bi-monthly newsletter, I think, has served a good purpose. It is not a fancy-dancy newsletter, not the issue of what you saw. But our parents are reading it. I'll leave you copies. I publish it every two months. It offers some social-emotional information in my corner, and then other updates. We are doing different events this year. I brought in an author who did a wonderful event with the kids. You'll see in that one slide where his hands are up, and the reindeer is me there, because I often turn up dressed like a reindeer. And we, he read his book, and it was on recycling, which was really, really cool. And the kids brought in toys that were slightly damaged to give back to the community. It was a good message. It really worked out well. We did it at all sites. We're offering a free family workshop in March by Donna Shay, and her topic is Love Has No Limits, But Parenting Does. And I gotta tell you, all of us, all parents or not parents, can benefit from this workshop. I wish I had had this workshop. So, I think the staff will, will benefit from greatly. I just wanted to close, because I didn't, I wasn't allowed to have an extra slide, but I can at least say this, okay? My, our parents' survey results have come in. The responses were received on January 10th. We did the same survey last year at the same time. I added a few little new things. So, I wanted to just share with you the results, because there's a couple areas that I wanna improve on, some areas that we're doing well on. So, in terms of happiness and comfort of our children, one to five, one being the lowest, five being the highest, 87% rated our program four or five this year. Last year was 84%. So, I'm, you know, we're going up. Professionalism, professionalism of staff, 91% rated it four to five this year. Last year, 83.5. Really happy with that. Overall quality of program, we dropped two points. So, I'm not sure what that's about. I have to go back and read some of the responses. We were at 90% last year, and this year, 88.7%. Communication with families, 92% say it's just enough. 7.1% say too little. Last year, we were, we improved just like a margin, like one, one percentage point. And the new question that I included this year was communication method preference. Most, as I kind of suspected, prefer email communication, you know? And I've learned, short is better. Bold, I hate to say bold, but, you know, subject, you gotta learn how to do it. And I still get questions from what I've written, because not everyone wants to read. Our second-most preferred was the newsletter, so that was comforting. But I wanna see about making that digital. I think I have to talk to Grace. And then, the other pieces, the flyers, website, and the school messengers, were all through fourth and fifth. So, I'm excited. We've got a lot going on. The kids continue to surprise me on how much they wanna learn. You know, we've got some artists here, we've got some carpenters, we've got some soon-to-be police chiefs. I mean, you'll see some things in the print that we've been doing that are also fun. I'm gonna close here. Questions are welcome.
Questions? Go ahead.
I don't know if this is so much a question as it is sort of a series of comments, but it feels like every time you come and present to us, I am always struck by how thoughtful you are, how organized and reflective, and how dynamic the program is, and how well you service parents and kids. As you were talking, I was gonna ask you a question about how you solicit and create feedback, but you, you addressed that.
Yeah, I see that.
And I, I appreciate how you continue to modify your approach based on feedback. I help a friend out coaching basketball once a week. And one of the kid's fathers also helps out, and he said, "Hey, sorry, so-and-so is sort of out of energy. He had extended learning today, so he's exhausted." And I think it's a good thing. I think it's a really good thing. So, I don't really have a question. I just very much value your approach and how you are constantly adapting and modifying.
That means the world to me. It really does. I have to say, though, that the kids feel you. The, the kids do. I mean, just when I think I'm tired, this is my last comment, because it is funny, and it's worth recording. For those of you who do yoga, you know what Shavasana is? It's the resting pose. All the students now, there's about 40 of them do yoga with me, you know? "Miss Reindeer, can we be, do Shavasana now?" And I said, "We haven't done yoga yet." They're tired, they are. But that being said, I do think that there's a lot of opportunities for us to learn from the kids. So, keep feeding me. I do have results of everything or, and anything you want. I'm not gonna pass them out. I'll leave them here, and you can take them as you wish. And I will not be offended if you don't wanna take any of them.
I have one recommendation, and you can completely leave it where it sits. But the one thing that I would say about the program, I would echo Mike's sentiments. It's amazing. I've used it in the past, and I've used it recently, and it's just wonderful. My kids love going. The registration process, right? Do you use a Google form still? Is there any way that we could use the registration software that the district uses? Because it actually, like, holds your information. And I find the Google form to be so laborious, if I'm registering three kids. You know, I would, so I have to enter the doctor's information.
Okay.
You know, so, I just wondered, that new system that we're using is so fantastic.
Great, good suggestion.
I don't know if it would, you know, force a piece of your budget away or what, and therefore, you could just dismiss it as saying...
No, it's not a dismissal. I don't know. You know, I think that anything to make things more efficient. I mean, really, Lea Vanko is probably the magician of all magicians, you know? Making things that, and that being said, you know, efficiency's always welcome. So, we can explore it.
Yeah, I know the Google form is free.
It is free in public, yeah. But thank you for having me. I appreciate it, and have a great rest of the night.
Raina, just quickly too, before you go. So, I think that's a really good idea for us to take a look further into the registration piece. And I think, I think we can certainly do that. I'm just sitting here thinking too, can we tie that even in with the type of stuff that we're using right now with Tom Hul's program? Because that was a program that we had looked to see at one point in time. Could we extend that? And I'm just sitting here thinking, now, I think we can. I think we may be able to buy, purchase another module that would be, that's separate from...
So, under my school budget?
Yeah. I, I, anyway, we, we'll take, it's a great suggestion. We'll take a look and see if that isn't something. Because I remember looking into this about four years ago. So, the other thing too, Raina, I just wanna say too, I mean, I know that when you, you came, I, I asked if you could stretch, you know, beyond the, beyond the elementary level. And here, I'm sitting here tonight, and I'm looking at what you've done. And I mean, the middle schools just really took off last year, and, you know...
We've got some work to do. There's, there's more to be done. I just have to figure out, because I do think that the middle school would benefit from some of these enrichment programs, but...
What's interesting is, I had a meeting with Bob Romer the other day, and, and on a completely different topic, you know? It was interesting, this came up, and we said, "Yeah, I remember when." This was just like a little idea way out there, and look, look at what you've done with it, you know? And now, the notion of moving up for like a mentorship program with the high school, like, it's just so cool. So, thank you. Thank you for stretching.
You know, people help you stretch. That's the other part. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity.
So, speaking of, of the mentorship program, actually, you said the high school aide, they, they, sorry. The mentees are not paid. Are the high school aides, like, is it a part-time job for them? Or do they get school credit or anything like that?
No, they, well, I can tell you that many of them will, of course, benefit from it on their college applications and whatnot. And I have written references as well, in the letters of rec. But the, they're, they're paid at a minimum wage for the dis, you know? It's, it's reasonable. I don't like to have them working too much more than three days a week, because I know they have other commitments, and then I have to do the juggling thing.
Right.
But they are very, very responsible. And then, the mentees, of course, it's a five-week training program. It's like a shadow program. They'll, they'll be there for an hour and a half, you know, once a week. Enough to get a feeling and to see if it's, they like the vibe. And we'll see how it grows. And we'll see what, you know, I have five kids who have signed up for the information session so far, and I don't know how many applications I'll get, so...
But you know, Raina, even that, that component, I think back to a couple of years ago, where we were at, and I'm looking to Anne Marie, when, you know, some, some of the things that we were experiencing, you know, that during that early time period, to where we sit today, no comparison. I mean, you've just, you've done yeoman's work, and just so, so appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Pat for Employee Insurance. Anne Emery.
Take two people before you go.
We don't have our rates yet.
Basically, we don't have our rates yet. Maya had their annual board meeting on Saturday while we were in our budget workshop. So, I did get an email from them telling me what the overall increases were. So, I'm very hopeful at this point. So, we're just waiting for the rates. I email them continuously, and I'm hoping to get them by the end of the week. I was hoping they'd just say, "Will you give her the rates and get her on the email?" So, that's where we stand right now. And it will probably be a piece of the next meeting, you'll see some kind of a change, you know, as far as that comes. So, that's it.
Any questions? Questions?
Speaking of just numbers in general, I mean, we're still waiting for other numbers too from the state right now. And that's why, you know, when we take a look at, at budget, I mean, yes, you look at reductions, but the revenue coming in is also a big piece for us. And we're still waiting for some of those numbers, like this very number, because that will affect that bottom line, like, that's sitting right now, you know, whatever it's sitting at. So, remember, it is just really critical to remember that this kind of thing is critical to the bottom line of whatever that increase looks like. Okay. Any questions for Emery or Pat? No? Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy.
I'll be back.
Yes, yes. We'll see you in a minute. However, there's gonna talk about a potential third Bolton School Committee member. I think this probably should be re-titled Population Review, because that's what it says in the regional agreement that we should be doing. So, Mary is going to present to us. But it's funny, because I think it was the very first meeting that you were on the school committee. You said, "Hi, we should review the population." And so, Kathy at that time had said, "Okay, go do the research. Let's see when we did it the last time, and let's get started with this." And it's taken a while, but, but that is not, that is not your doing.
All right. I was almost gonna say that you should do this, but let's see. It works fine. It works fine. It works fine, but I just aim it toward you. So, the, the question did start off, and, because I'm one of the Bolton reps, and one of my first questions, even before I was elected to school committee, was, could Bolton be entitled to a third member? And, and so, I contacted Pam Powell, who is Bolton's town clerk, and she and Bolton's town accountant, the Nachka Rogers. They were also wondering the same thing. And so, we looked at the, at the regional agreement, and we tried to find out. So, see, here's the language in the regional agreement. But you can look at it, and, but I'm gonna talk at the same time. So, a little bit of history. This isn't my first stint on school committee. I was on school committee 1987 to 1990, when I served on the Emerson School Committee, and we had five members. I was also elected to the Bolton-Stowe Union 47 School Committee, because Bolton and Stowe were in a union. And then, because I was a high school teacher on leave from Hudson High School, they said, "Why don't you be the representative to Neshoba Regional High School?" And that's the one school that was regionalized back then. So, little did I know that I was on three school committees, three years. I counted as nine years' experience. Anyway, so, the, if we look at the first regional agreement of three towns, it's dated 1994. Stowe had five members, Lancaster had five members, and Bolton had three. Then, with the next iteration of the agreement, which is dated 2003, Stowe has three, Lancaster has three, and Bolton has two. So, you probably had, this is the language that starts right off. Most school, regional school agreements are more or less boilerplate, and one of the first things you do is you talk about how you determine membership. And so, the population of participating towns shall be determined every five years in accordance with the town's annual census, as certified by the respective town, respective, they are respected too, but respective town clerks. The census will be reviewed by the regional district school committee to determine if the number of representatives elected from each town is within the standard 10 to 16% deviation in compliance with the one-person, one-vote ruling. So, let's look at that a little closer.
I have a question.
Okay. Questions are ready.
Okay, yeah. Shouldn't we be looking at all three towns, their populations? Because certain towns may have grown significantly over, since it was last, lastly evaluated? And for example, Stowe may end up with five representatives again.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Okay. You might not have a chance to, to see this. So, to start off with the every-five years, this is the document right here that gives the, the dates for the membership schedule for review. And it starts off in 2001, but then, the, the agreement itself was amended in 2003. We look at 2006, 11, and 2016, and there is no record in, in the school records or town records, because we were looking for this, to say that this had happened. Anecdotally, Pam Powell said that she hadn't been asked for certified census numbers in her 12 years as Bolton Town Clerk. So, this is one of the things that I did talk to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education about, and they said, "Okay, it would've been much better if you had done those re," you know, not us, but if the committee at the time had, had done those reviews every five years. But at this point, just continue on. Go, go from here and conduct a review. So, so, let's look a little bit closer at some of the, just to explain what is in, and what is the language, what it means. Now, the annual, town's annual census refers to the number of people who reside in each town, not the number of students who are in each, in the town's schools. town, not the number of students who are in each of the town's schools. At the MASAS-C conference in November, I went to a workshop, Regional School Agreement Workshop, and that was one of the questions too, why wouldn't it be tied to the students? But this is the way the law reads. So this is the process, right within the four corners of our agreement, that we, as school committee, will request each town clerk to provide certified numbers on the town's annual census. Then we review those certified numbers, applying the 10 to 16% deviation formula. Now, that 10 to 16, standard 10 to 16 deviation presented such a problem, because if you have standard deviation, that's one thing, but you don't have a standard 10 to 16% deviation. It's, you know, it just, it doesn't make sense. So, I mean, that was what we were looking at, Pam and the town accountant, and I brought our agreement to that workshop down at the Cape, because I went up afterwards and said, look at this, what does this mean? And the person, Mac Reed, who is a retired superintendent, working as a consultant now, said, hmm, you know, I've seen 10%, but not standard deviation with the, and not 10 to 16%, but he said, so really, at some point, when we have a chance to, we should take out the word standard, because that was the stumbling block. How do you figure out the standard deviation anyway? So the 10%, though, has been held up, not held up, it has been upheld in court cases, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. So now, when we go, this doesn't, this process is right within the agreement and doesn't require an amendment or a town vote. Well, if we were to do an amendment, which sometime we might have to do, and I'll talk about that in a minute, that is, you know, go to the town, two-thirds votes, and then gets signed by the commissioner's office too. So there's a whole process involved in that, and we could have a consultant to help us, but that would cost money, so I think we'd probably do a lot of this ourselves. Anyway, so this is all in Section 1, and now we go down to 1D, and it says, if the population in the participating town results in a change in the numbers of members to be elected to the Regional District School Committee, such change shall be affected at the annual town elections following the certification of the census. So that, that's right there too. So this is really important. It's more important than that, in a sense, but it correlates with that 10% or 16%, in compliance with the one-person, one-vote ruling. So this goes to the ruling, the one-person, one-vote ruling refers to the fact that one person's voting power ought to be roughly equivalent to another person's within the same state. And we hear about gerrymandering in certain states, drawing lines to, you know, benefit one political party or another, usually on the state level. However, this goes all the way down to the local level. This goes down to us in terms of representation. And so it comes up in the legal protection clause of the 14th Amendment of the Constitution that requires substantially equal legislative representation for all citizens in the state, and we could say, in our towns, regardless of where they reside, since we're a regional district. So just let me say, this is something that they talked about at the workshop I went to. Now, one-person, one-vote, it would be easy, and this is a hypothetical case. If each of three towns had 3,000 as its town population, this would be a dream case for us, right? There would be 9,000 in the total regional district. And each, each town had three school committee representatives, and each school committee representative would be representing 1,000 residents. Therefore, across the district, the representation would be equal in compliance with the one-person, one-vote power, you know, voting power regulation, but obviously, this doesn't, for most districts, a determination that would never be that clean. Hence, usually that 10% difference would get the 10 to 16% difference. So we consulted with MARS, which is the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, and I talked to the president there, and she talked about that there are different ways that some districts figure out the membership to comply with the one-person, one-vote. But this is something that regional school districts need to look at with enrollment that goes up or that goes down with one town, another town, in comparison to each other, making sure that they keep that, the proportion, right?
You used the word students. Student population, and it's not student population.
It's not, it's not, yeah, thank you.
There's a reason for that.
I have two of you to correct it. All right, so Desi is reviewing our agreement and contacting the legal department regarding our membership determination, which we got a call today that because our 1994 agreement, the 2003 amended agreement is following suit, it's consistent with the process in 1994, so we can proceed without having to do an amendment with that. However, if, if it turns out that we were to, at some point, let's say we, there was enough town population for Bolton to have another member, which it might very well mean that Stowe and Lancaster would have additional members, the very first part of Section 1 would need to be amended, the language, and that would mean an amendment of the whole agreement, when you amend any. So what Desi is doing is looking over a whole agreement, because this is something they do for districts, to see if we're still in compliance with any laws, if there are any laws, and they'll let us know, it's going to take them a little while, and at that point, we could decide to do an amendment. However, the advice of the legal department right now is that as we proceed, and what we would like to do, you know, and what the recommendation is, is that we would, so we would vote tonight to authorize contacting the town clerks requesting, formally requesting the annual census certified numbers. We would review those numbers as soon as possible, like, let's say, the next meeting would be, would be great if we could do that. However, then, this would be more or less a catch-up, because, you know, 2006, 11, 16, you know, we didn't, somebody didn't do it. But then we would get back on board and do it again next year. But that, what we would do is, if it turns out that we are adding, then we would have, it's not an amendment, we just have some language there that would be explaining the process, and that's what my recommendation is, that we go forward. So, questions?
Mary, can you go back one slide?
Sure, that's easy to me, though I turned it on. Okay, that one?
Forward one.
Forward one.
Yeah, I just want to set up a couple of things too. So, one, I guess something for Desi, I'm a little confused as to how we would have to have an amendment in some cases, which requires a town vote in order to be in compliance with the law. Like, if it's the law, what is the town going to do, vote it down? But then also, I think that when a number of us started looking at the regional agreement and we saw that phrase, we all thought, oh, it's math, this is fairly straightforward. I was guilty of it myself, I was like, oh, that must mean this. And then as more people got involved, we started to realize there was an element of interpretation to this, and I don't think any of us want to be Supreme Court justices, where we're interpreting the original intent of the person that wrote it. And that was sort of the decision of like, all right, let's take this to Desi, they do this kind of stuff all the time, they're our governing body, really, so let's pass this off to them. It will be objective, because it is still math in the end, but kind of wanting to put it in their hands. And then also, if we were doing this on a regular basis, I don't think that we would need to bring this forward into such a discussion, even to authorize votes and things like that, because it's in our regional agreement, it's sort of within our authority by, by the regional agreement. However, because we have no record of it happening in the past for so long, I want to be really clear that there's a record of it this time, so that, you know, 20, 30 years from now, if somebody's looking back, they can say, oh, here's meeting minutes, here's a vote, just so that it's super crystal clear, and we're almost overdoing it a little bit, until we get back on track and this becomes a regular part of the process moving forward, so.
Okay.
Question?
We also have to obey the one-man-one-vote rule, so that, for example, if we decide, let's say Stowe has 10,000 people, and Bolton has 5,000 people, and Lancaster has 8,000 people. If we, if we went to the one to 1,000 relationship, it would be 10, 5, 8 on the school committee. Or we cut it in half, and we did 5, 2 and 1/2, 4. I don't know how we do the half a person, but does that supersede this other kind of calculation? Because the one-man-one-vote, obviously, Congress reapportioned how many of those 435 people get represented by different, by people, based upon every 10-year census.
So you'd add up those total populations you had, and then you would divide by the number of representatives to find out how, you know, what would be, if there were eight or, you know, if there were five, you'd divide that number, and then you'd find out how many each one was representing. And then you look at, you take the population and you measure it against that. The, Desi has a formula that we're going to be able to use, it's on an Excel spreadsheet that we're going to be able to use, so.
Is that, is that like the foundation formula?
No, it's not, it's not, you know, from what I understand, and we will have that as our tool, and, you know, we'll get that tool ahead of time, and so that will show us, because then the town's population is town's population. It's just that each one of us needs to be representing approximately the same number of residents.
In each town?
In each town, yeah, yeah. So you put the whole total population together, you know, because we're regional, so, you know, when you see, I think, when, you might answer any questions.
Okay, if the total population of the three towns is 15,000, okay? Do we, we still, we still do it proportionally?
Now, you're going to divide the number of representatives into 15,000, you've got to get a number.
Yeah, but wait a minute.
Yeah.
When you say, you mean, we stick with the same eight?
Okay.
Divide that into the 15,000?
Could you make it like 16,000?
That means we don't, we don't really change anything.
No, no, that's only the first step. Then you take the actual population of each town, and you look at, you, there's a way that they figure how, how it goes with that 2,000, now it's 2,000.
But you're, but you're limiting the, what you, the number you divide by, by the existing eight, the current eight members of the school board, you're just making each one of them represent more people? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, no, because now you're going to take the actual number and look at how many, you know, if somebody's 5,000, somebody's 4,000, you know, how that relates to that, to the 2,000, and it's part of the formula that they will give us. And we'll, we'll find out if somebody is like plus eight, you know, or if somebody is minus 13%, and so then you, and then we'll be able to see the deviation, the whole thing's.
So theoretically, if all of the town's populations have risen, do we end up with more members of the school committee?
We could.
Possibly. It seems like there's both a, you have to satisfy one-person, one-vote, and the relative population of the towns, you have to satisfy both of those conditions.
So you make a whole, I have to make a whole?
Yes, which sort of gets it, for me, it feels like there's a least common denominator argument somewhere in here, and it's complicated enough, doesn't seem like it should be complicated, but it is complicated enough that it will come down from Desi, and hopefully, they can explain it better than we can understand it, because I, I mean, I don't even understand it yet.
And it turns out that regional agreements have to be signed off by the commissioner's office, and that, when I went to that workshop, that was the first time that many of these regional districts were hearing that, and so it's, there are a lot of places. And when I heard the stories, and they tell stories of regional, you know, how many, and they have lots and lots of members in lots and lots of towns, and I was thinking how fortunate we are for the cooperation and the goodwill that goes on among the three towns here. So, anyway, we will have, we will get the commissioners, they actually do that at Desi, then they, they look it over, and then they send it over, and somebody, you know, puts the signature.
So in some ways, I'm somewhat happy that we're deferring to Desi as a discussion armorer, because I, like, I think I shared with you earlier, I did, some of this stuff does confuse me, and I'm going to ask you a question, I don't want to belabor the point. If you want to say this is exactly what Desi is going to be swooping in here for, that's great, but I think of this 10 to 16 range as the sweet spot, and if our numbers fall below 10%, that means the gap between the towns has been closed, and if we are outside the 16, that means that the gap has gotten bigger, and the 10 to 16 means business as usual status quo. Does that seem right, so that I can anticipate when we hear back from Desi, that that's how I will be able to interpret what they've given us? Is that what I can expect, or do you not know?
I don't, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
No.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, okay, so for the record, I'm very confused, but it sounds like we're all a little bit.
I do think that when she comes back next time with some of the more concrete information that she's not able to present right now, I do think you're going to find that your answers are going to be easily, I mean, your question's going to be easily answered, to be honest with you. It is really complicated to present, and I think, Mary, you did a great job today, because it's a really complicated topic, and you write there pieces, there, you say, I just don't understand this at all. So, and, you know, and I have shared with both Elaine and Mary, I mean, Rhoda Schneider is just outstanding, and is the top legal expert that they've got in Desi, so she says something, you can take it to the bank. So I'm really thrilled that that unit is looking after this.
I just have one more question. This was a regional agreement between the three towns, and I wonder if the towns have any purview whatsoever in this, or is this exclusively the prerogative of the school committee? In other words, are we deferring at all to the towns for any reason, or is this simply the school committee?
Not at this point, what we're looking at, this is school committee. If we amend, then the towns come into this, but at this point, this is school committee, it's what, it's within the four corners of, it's right in the district agreement.
That it is a school committee?
Absolutely a school committee. However, I mean, it's very important that we contact our town clerks, and that they will give the certified numbers, yeah.
For numbers?
So that brings, that brings the town in, in a sense, I mean, this will be very open.
Right.
There's no fudging numbers.
No, no, that's not what I was inferring, I'm just, I'm just, I just want to be clear that the only, from your understanding, the only deference, I guess, to our towns would be to request those numbers, not as a mechanism to solicit feedback or any kind of voting or anything like that?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
I don't think so, because we're talking about MGL, like, this isn't, this is bigger than Neshoba, so this is a statewide issue, so I don't think that our town, if our towns could vote to change it and say, we only want one person from each town on the school committee, like, I think the state would say, no, you can't do that, it's against the law. All right, so at this point, we wanted to give this update, because there has been a lot that's actually going on, and I could entertain a motion for what we should do moving forward. Steve?
I move to authorize Dr. Mary McCarthy to request certified census populations from our member towns, and to serve as the school committee liaison for the population review process with all outside parties until the process is complete.
Thank you, do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, I'll...
Will this be done by town meeting?
Oh, I really think that...
Because, well, actually, it has to be done by, by opening the election time period if we have more elections.
Well, I really think, if things go as I, as I hope they will, if Pam Powell and her readiness to give numbers is an indication of what the other town clerks may do, I'm hoping that we could do this at the next meeting, have the numbers, and just settle this at the next meeting. That's, and so that would give plenty of time to the towns to, if there are additional members.
To the election process, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, given there's already been a back and forth with Desi, I don't see this taking a long time, you never know, but, I mean, she's already made the contacts and knows the details, so.
Can I request that the motion be read again?
Move to authorize Dr. Mary McCarthy to request certified census populations from our member towns, and to serve as the school committee liaison for the population review process with all outside parties until the process is complete.
Okay.
Just vote, and then, all those in favor? Any opposed?
I vote, I vote for you, yes.
All right.
We had a hand in the back of the room.
Yes, the motion passes, so I'm going to allow it, yes. Yes, Don?
Well, as the town administrator, I would have expected to be allowed to participate in this discussion, this is on the agenda tonight at the request of the Bolton Board of Selectmen.
Well, it's a school committee process, and within the regional agreement, it says this is the school committee's process, so we're just trying to follow along with what the regional agreement says.
I understand what the regional agreement says, there could be some texture led to this if, if the town was allowed to participate. I wasn't even aware of this material being presented tonight until Erin informed me of it, and I pulled it down from the packet, so I was able to sit with the town clerk today and review this material with her, so one would hope that we would be allowed to participate.
We can talk after the meeting, then?
Well, I'm not here to talk after the meeting, I'm, I would have expected to talk on TV now.
Okay, well, this is our school committee business meeting, so it's not a public forum.
I understand that it's a public forum, so I do inform the Board of Selectmen that the town administrator, on their behalf, was not allowed to participate in this conversation.
I'm not sure what you're saying, but I would like to talk to you after the meeting about it.
That's not after the meeting, this is a public discussion.
No, it's not, of the school, it's a discussion of the school committee.
Okay, so this is a first, so when, when something affects a town, the town administrator has always been allowed to offer insight, and that's being denied tonight, and I'd just like that made clear.
This is just an update to the school committee, we don't even actually have any information from Desi, or anything that would result in an impact to the town, so...
It's definitely an impact to the town.
It might be an impact to the town, we don't know that yet, and we'll bring that up in the next meeting, so, at that...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to, unless anybody has anything else, I'm going to move on.
Well, I was just going to say that I think that because nothing has actually been decided tonight, that the conversation at our next meeting will actually be far more important to the town administrators, and so should we maybe invite conversation, or do they have a role to play? I think we probably need some guidance on that, maybe from Dorothy, or...
I don't know whether it's Dorothy in this case, to be honest with you, I think it really gets back to the D E S E, and I think... And, and I think too, the other thing that I want to say is, we actually had this in the parking lot since I think your very first meeting. This wasn't, this wasn't on the agenda tonight specifically as a result of the Board of Selectmen. This was something that we found in the parking lot for, for a while now and you've been looking into it for a while now. It isn't just like the last week and, and I mean, you, we referred to the fact that you went to the MASMEC conference and went to sessions on it. So to be honest with you, this is a school committee function that you've been continuing to work away at for now, for several months now.
He was, he was here for, for citizens' comments, he could have said something then because it was on the agenda.
I mean, we're following process and we're following the law, so I'm not sure how much room for interpretation there is there. Yeah.
And, and, um, you know, certainly this is awkward. However, just today, Dawn invited, um, the Bolton reps to the next selectman's meeting, which would be right, right after, um, our next meeting. And so, uh, but I would certainly, you know, want to make sure, at least on my part, um, if we're all set to go with agenda, that, that Dawn would know about this for the next meeting. He can, because he's been here for a couple of meetings, he might like to be here for that. But in any event, I will be, um, specifically reporting to selectmen, Mike isn't able to be there, but Mike and I can talk ahead of time. And, um, and I'll report to the selectmen and give them, you know, an update on, on what we, what we decide as we look at the numbers. Because it's going to be a lot more concrete than.
You'll have much greater specificity at that point, you know, than you do right now. And so I, I think Leah, you articulated it beautifully, you know, a, a, as Steve, you did too. And keep in mind, this, this is school committee meeting. It's, it's open to the public, but it is a school committee meeting, so. I think, oh, sorry, can I just add one thing, sorry, Mike? I think the other thing too, that we strive really hard for, and I think that, um, kind of goes back to your point too, is we generally don't report out to other boards until this, this board, this committee has made decisions. So you going after the meeting, um, makes perfect sense. You know, if that meeting was like next week, it wouldn't make any sense, but because it's fought the night after, that would make perfect sense. I'm sorry, Mike.
That's okay, I just, um, I think as a matter of process, maybe we can, we can talk, um, offline about this, or now, it doesn't matter to me. But, uh, just to sort of circle, circle back to Dawn's concerns and verify that we are doing exactly what it is that we ought to be doing. And that, you know, what I heard from Dawn was that this was a first and that, uh, towns are always invited to have these sorts of discussions. So, um, if in fact we are doing exactly what we need to be doing, that's great. I think it's probably, as a matter of practice, a good idea just to confirm.
I think that, you know, Mary, in your conversation with the DESE, you might want to ask them. We could also have Kathy reach out to Dorothy. In that case, that would be a Dorothy question for regional school districts and, you know, that kind of thing. And I think too, it's, it's not lost on me. I mean, we work very closely with all three of our, our units and th- this conversation has come up with the three town administrators, um, at the last meeting that I was at. So I just would want you to know that both Orlando and, um, Bill weighed in on that conversation too. But that was totally different than this. This is where the work needs to happen.
Yeah.
So, and it's, it's a tough topic. It is a tough topic.
It seems to me that I just need one more piece of clarity here. Nobody is making a judgment call in this scenario. This is going to be told to us what we must do.
Must do and/or might have options. They may offer some suggestions and then you may end up doing whatever. We, we don't know, tonight is a we don't know, we don't know night. But we put it on the agenda because we've had this discussion, we followed along with it and we wanted to, to present tonight. I think, Mary, you did a great job with it. So, you know, no, nothing has been decided as we're sitting here because you have no specificity, as you say, Erin, tonight. That's why there was no motion tonight other than to say, yes, Mary, continue to please act as our point person. And yes, please go and get now the, the certified census.
So I think that it would probably be important, because I didn't realize that there would be options. I thought that they were just going to inform.
There might not be. We don't know.
So my, my thought is if we are presented with a menu of options, even just two, that those are put in some sort of advanced packet so that citizens can come and comment. And therefore, if we're asked to make decisions next meeting on this, uh, that people have the opportunity to weigh in in advance. Otherwise, if they're just telling us what we have to do.
That's pretty simple.
Be no discussion.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Can I, can I ask something?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I know we've already.
That's okay.
Moved on on this, I don't want to belabor this point, but I thought I heard Dr. McCarthy say something about the fact that somewhere along the line, and I, I have to tell you, I, it's hard to get your head around this. The legality is intended to, um, regional school committee, regional school agreements and the amendments thereof. But I, I heard you say something to the effect of that there may be required some type of amendment, some sort of add additional language or modify language to the regional school agreement.
Now, this, this is really, um, let me see if I have the agreement. It's, it's really kind of simple. We follow the, the formula, which we're going to do. And let's say it means that there's another Bolton representative and there could be more representatives from Stowe and Lancaster too. Then the first paragraph talks about the fact that there are three from Lancaster, three from Stowe and two from Bolton. I mean, this, this seems like such a simple, uh, you know, it's just, you, you would have to have section one, you would have to have that be in accordance with whatever were decided. Because D talks about the fact, if it turns out that there's a need for more members, that should happen at the subsequent, um, town elections. So it's, that is all there. But if we were to change anything, like even change, take out the word standard, which would make it so clear instead of standard deviation. Any changes mean, uh, an amendment is needed and then it does go to the town and it goes to, um, town meeting for a two-thirds vote. So at this point, DESI is saying to us, you don't have to do that now. It might be nice to have a little note to that effect somewhere, but many, many school districts are, um, as they look at their regional agreements, they need to be amended because of some law. Maybe ours won't have to. And so they're outdated, because 1995, 2003 is, is a long time ago. So, um, anyway, it would be worth it to do it right now and they're saying that we do not have to. It's right, what we're doing, this process is right within the, the agreement itself and it's school committee.
I'm sorry, I don't.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, I'm not, it, it's not so much, you know, what it is that we would amend the agreement to. What I was asking more or less is about the, the process intended to actually crafting the language for an amendment. And I'm sorry that Mr. Lowe left because I really would have liked to hear my comments, maybe he'll watch later. But I, I think the past practice throughout the Commonwealth is such that when there has to be an amendment to a regional school agreement, that's a collaborative effort. That is, there's a subcommittee established and that members of the select boards and other members of the public are then brought into that process.
Absolutely right.
Okay, so I'm right, you know, I'm going to stop clocking right twice a day.
Right. It's a whole, it's a much bigger process.
Okay.
It's a big deal.
It is.
Right.
But at this point, we don't have to do that, even though, even, because we're, we're going with the process. And this is the ruling that came from DESE today from the legal department that we'll get it in writing too. So, that's where we are. However, as they review the, the whole agreement, if there's something else that they're going to recommend that we would change, then exactly, we said, Joe, the town comes into it. They would be part of a committee. We could have a consultant and spend some more money. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we could, that's the workshop that I went to, it was on amending regional schools and you're right about that, yep. You don't have to do that.
Like I said, I'm going to stop clocking, I'm right twice a day.
Okay, well, you were right.
All right. Is everybody okay with this topic for the time being? It will obviously be on our next agenda.
Thank you, Mary, for the, your standing here on this.
I would say my pleasure.
Moving on to old business, which I have a feeling will be old business on our agendas for years to come. Um, the MSBA.
So I'm going to have Alita pull up some sheets. So, um, what I had, uh, mentioned to you last time about the feasibility study and the fact that we would like to put this on the spring, um, town, town meeting warrant. They sent us the language, which is like a page long, like when you see the article, it's very long. And I had said, suggested to you last time that they, they were going to help us to try to come up with a, a number, whatever that number would look like in terms of what do you think it should be? What I didn't realize is that they were going, what they really said, what they really meant by that is we're going to give you information and you can try to figure out whatever that number is going to be. So, um, so here's where I'm sitting this, this evening and I'm just going to kind of go through some of this quickly. We'll look at this and I'll show you the, the columns that I'd like you to kind of focus on. And then really, we're, we're going to spend the most time is, is at the last two pages of this. But, so you can see this information, what you really want to look at is the feasibility appropriation here. So you can, you see like there's 1.3, 900,000, 1.2. These are the school, the districts, these are the schools and the enrollment. Now, keep in mind that our enrollment sits at about 1,000, right? Sometimes it goes just under, sometimes it goes just over 1,100, you know, that, that's the ballpark that it's in. And, and this, these are, this is, by the way, a draft that we got, so I'm not sure, um, how long it's, it's a draft before it becomes into, um, something concrete. But, so for example, like, um, the, the Ashland is, is looking at redoing their David Minnis School. It's got 628 students. They felt that their FSA, you know, appropriation should be about a million dollars. But these are all elementary schools, so that's the key to be looking at here, okay? So, um, if you can just go to the next page, we'll look at it quickly. Please. Hey, so, we'll stop there, thank you. Again, these are all elementary schools and you can still see the numbers there, you know, anywhere from, and, and I'm willing to, yeah, when you take a look, I mean, this, this enrollment was 170 students. I mean, so you're looking at a much smaller building than we're looking at doing. So let's go to the next one and you can just follow those numbers, okay? Again, here, these are elementary, again, the same sorts of numbers, but you can see somewhere higher. Here, this one here is, this is Wellesley, 2.5 million for a small school. Keep going. Thank you. Now, these are your middle schools, but you're seeing, again, the numbers are still around that, that million mark as a, as a general rule of thumb. And you're looking at numbers, a couple of numbers here that are a little bit higher, but still not to the high school, so keep going, one more. There we go, thanks. Okay, so now here we're looking at the high school configurations, which is more where we would sit, right? And I, I just highlighted, and these are 2019 numbers, so these are probably more current, obviously, than our, the earlier numbers would be. But take a look at the student populations, now take a look at the appropriations. So you're going to see a number more of, you know, 2 million. I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just saying, you're seeing, uh, because you can think of, it, it's a lot different when you're building a high school than when you're building an elementary school or even a middle school. Um, and so these are the numbers in, in this ballpark here, where there's Waltham, there are 1,600 students, um, at 2.2 million. So taking a look up closer towards our, our numbers, you know, it's on a log here, but this was in 2017. NOSA with 1.3. There's Sharon with 1,100 at 1.9. Going down a little bit more, just a little bit more, Alita, thanks. And this is Worcester, these are the two schools in Worcester, go down to the next page. Thanks. And here again, I mean, here's Bristol Plymouth, um, you know, just under a million in 2019. Here's Northeast Metro, 2019, a million and around 1,200 kids. And they've said to us all along, we've, when we've had these types of discussions about feasibility studies, it would probably be anywhere from, you know, high 800, 900 to 1, 1.2 million. That was always the range that they gave us. And so when you see this, you say, yeah, that makes sense because that is kind of the range that we've said for the last two to three years, that that's probably where we thought we'd be. So then, um, they said, they suggested that I reach out to, to these, um, most recent schools and say, okay, is that exactly where you kind of came in at? Or are you in the middle of doing this right now? Where do you sit right now with that? Cause I really, from this, I've got no idea, I can't, I can't tell. So, um, you know, we talked about a couple of things. I don't need, I don't need a vote from you, well, I don't need a vote on this anyway, but, um, you know, direction from you. I can wait until next meeting, I can call these school districts and see, you know, how close they were. But honestly, you're seeing this continues to be right at that million mark, that, that ballpark. So I'm not sure what direction you'd like me to go, if you'd like me to reach out to each of these districts and see where they were at? Or do you want to do something like borrow up to, like for example, that we did with the Leach Field and Oil Tank, where I think we set up to 600,000, but I think we were five, uh, we were just right at that 500,000 mark. So, you know, it, it's always nice to have a little bit of extra room if you need it. But I think we've shown due diligence here with that, in terms of that particular borrowing. So Steve's suggestion or a thought?
The thought is that the feasibility studies would not normally take about a year. So if they started in 2019, the odds are they're not complete yet. Maybe we need to talk to some of the schools in 2018 because they are feasibility studies that should be finished. And from their original, from their original amount of money that they had thought they needed, what did they really spend? That might be a way of narrowing it down and getting us a better idea of what, what that.
And I'm happy to do that.
Cost us.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Seems to me more realistic of dealing with the ones who are complete, well, what did it really cost you?
Yeah, well, and it.
And then maybe act, uh, put in a cost of living allowance or something.
Well, and I wonder too, like, I, I hear what you're saying, but I can imagine that, I think it's still worthwhile to call those 2019s because they would have done the, um, you know, the, um, bid, got the bids in and probably, so they, we would already know what their bids were coming in at. So I think that, I think that it's still of value to call some of the 2019s. You're absolutely right, but I think that there's value in connecting with the 2019s as well.
It's a fair point because it's not clear from that spreadsheet if that amount of money for each school was enough.
Well, that's exactly, that's my concern.
And what, what happens if you run over? You have to go back to the towns and ask for more money?
That way, that was only my thought when you're dealing with the ones that are already complete. Well, we, but we said a million dollars, but it really was a million six or something like that. Or it was really 900,000. So, you know, that, looking at ones that are complete, because even if you originally say, well, it's going to be a million, but it comes in at a million two, you've still got to pay the million two.
Mike?
A comment and a question. The first is the comment, I, I'd be willing to bet that if you were to graph the FSA appropriation against the respective town budget or the FSA appropriation against the population, um, you would see that equation emerge. You would see a really clear trend and then you'd be able to predict with greater ease, and I think it'd be a little bit more palatable from a public standpoint, how we're coming up with our estimation. That's one thing. And then the, the other question is, do we have a strategy on how we're going to deliver this to the towns? Do we have a way that we are going to incrementally inform, update and share so that this doesn't just come up and it's like, oh goodness, there's.
So that, so that's a great, um, great point. And again, that's part of the emerging work that we're doing right now with Dr. Foster. And we actually had this very discussion, I think a week ago, you know, as we took a look at it. And for example, I've got like, I wouldn't say in the hopper, but kind of in the hopper, um, uh, two memos ready to start to roll out, you know? And I wanted to wait until this meeting tonight before I sent them out. And because one of the things that, that's come up time and again is, um, yeah, I don't want to read through the SOI. Can you just give me some of the standpoints of what, what are, what are the deficiencies that we're looking at in that building? And so, um, I, I've, what I've done is I've created two memos right now. One is really just looking at the actual facilities and the structures and things that are in desperate need. For example, um, the roof over top of the, the guidance department and the, the kitchen is severely degraded, you know? Those, those types of bullet points, if you will. But then the second memo actually looks at the programming and the limitations that we've got for instruction right now. And so it's kind of from, from a different lens, but I think nonetheless equally is important. And what I really did was I kind of followed the SOI and, and how the SOI was crafted and kind of put it into a couple of different buckets ready to roll out. Now with that then, Todd and I also spoke at some length about what, what I'd really like to do, and we'll probably have this created within the next week or so, is on our website, a tab that, that anybody can go to and see all these, like even this kind of thing, we would drop that in there. And so that people can start to see processes as they're starting to, you know, um, the timelines that we were talking about earlier with Dr. Foster's. He's creating those timelines, that could be dropped in there. And so, and to your point, you're exactly right. This will probably be on the agenda almost every single meeting from, from here on in. Because there's, there's always, there's always things happening with this, right? So you want to, I want to keep you up to date and we hope that this keeps our community up to date. So, um, so we're kind of looking at creating that legacy and we're thinking further, even beyond right now, we're seeing it as just a tab until we get to a certain point and then we can see turning it into its own website. And, you know, Dan Versi did that as well and I, and I think a couple, I'm not sure what you're, what you're doing in Lexington. But I certainly, again, we can talk offline, you need to tell me what your thinking is on that.
Well, just as a reiteration to what I think you were alluding to, the more creative we can be to delivering this information, because I think different people consume in different ways.
Definitely.
Whether it's a memo or whether it's a, a blast or on the website or how, you know? As many creative ways as we can, I think. as many creative ways as we can, I think that more is always going to be better than less.
You know, one of the problems I think I'm, I'm having, and certainly, you know, when I just went, went to work on the first memo, is it's just too long. It's just, that's too much, you know? And I thought, this is not digestible, this, I, I've got to rethink this. And so, so that's a great point, and I'm not sure that I've landed in that, you know, as you talked earlier about finding that sweet spot. I looked at it tonight just before I came in, and I thought, you know what, I still have to, I've got to do something different. So maybe even breaking that first memo down into two memos, and maybe, you know, rolling it out.
Yeah.
You know, and, and even just general updates, like the fact that the, the high school staff now, you know, that initial team that started, has had a couple of meetings and is feeling really good about the work. And the fact that they're all set now to carry this forward on Thursday, okay, that's exciting, you know, like, I'm excited to see what happens on Thursday. And so there's stuff always happening with this right now, but I really want to stress, we are not saying that this is because we're getting a new building, or that is not, it's just looking ahead and saying, where's this journey going to take us? And I think that's exactly what I said in my memo. The journey is just exciting, we'll see where it takes us, you know?
If it were me, and she said so herself, I would turn this over to Grace Fiore, and let her create a digital magazine, a print magazine, and be able to disseminate very well-designed and well-thought-out information that way.
You know, it was interesting, because when we were talking about one of our student meetings that we had at the high school in the last month and a half, when we asked them, we said, and she kind of alluded to that tonight earlier, where do you get your information from, you know? Because we send out emails, we don't read emails anymore. Good to know, you know? And we always have to keep in mind that each of these generations, as they kind of move through, like, every couple of years, has its thing, like Twitter is almost like passe right now, you know? Because they, you know, they, they do the Snapchat, or the Instagram, or they're doing this, or that, or, you know, and it's trying to follow it. But I, I think that's a, a really a great idea.
One of these with the MSBA theme?
She, she's just amazing, she is, she really, I think she has so much potential. Yeah. Leah?
I was going to say, same thing, I think that using the student population to actually show visually what you're talking about in your memo. So if you have bullet points that identify the weak points of the building, why not have imagery or even moving image that documents it and actually shows it? Because I think that a lot of people who don't go to the high school, and, and I've just barely gotten there, they say, oh, that building looks beautiful, because the facade has been renovated, and they don't understand the challenges that actually exist. So putting it in a memo might reach a handful of people, but I think imagery has power. The other thing I was going to say is, working backward, have we started to think about when we're going to? I feel like the messaging is dependent upon the timeline. So if we're going to be asking for the feasibility study in the May election, then I think that we need to start fast-tracking the messaging.
I couldn't agree more with you, yeah.
So where are we headed there?
Well, that's what I was saying, that's just emerging right now through our discussions. Probably by next meeting, I should be able to roll something out for you.
For, for which election we're going to go to?
Well, I'm hoping that you're going to give me the direction to do this particular election. What I'm talking about, the rolling out, is a communication strategy for it. And what, what does that look like from our lens?
But I think strategically, you probably need to use the timeline to guide you, right?
Oh, I absolutely agree.
So if we're in the fall, then we have, we could spread it out more, make it, you know, smaller bits over larger periods of time. But if it's in May, I know a lot of people who have no idea this is happening.
Yeah.
Who are going to need some familiarity, and not just through, you know, please pardon me, but not just through the superintendents' memos.
No, I agree.
I read wonderfully, but...
Not everybody will.
Not everybody will, or have time for...
Which is why, as I reflected on that, the memo that I, that first one, it's just too much. There's just too much information in there, and it's like, do I just go with the salient points? And I, then I started breaking them all down, talking about, okay, HVAC system, roofing and stuff, and then I'm thinking, they probably won't care about that, except though, they would if we had to come and say, well, look, we need 10 million to do the roof. Do you know what I mean? Like, when you start to look at that. So then I thought, do I break it down into infrastructure? But to your point, how do you get those soundbites in, in a manner that people can latch on to them and understand them quickly, without being overwhelmed by too much information that they really probably aren't going to care about?
I think the high school journalists and their ability to, to use, you know, their technology to create broadcasts, I mean, who better to tour that building to demonstrate what we're looking at than the kids?
I absolutely agree. And I will, I'm happy to reach out to Grace and see if she, she'd like to, she's not the only, the only writer there, so I think that we've got, you know, we've got a nice little cadre of folks that we could go to. Steve?
I'll just bring up the issue that you and I talked about the other day of our, the person we have on retainer.
Yeah.
This should be part of his, his work too.
The public relations person.
Yes.
And, and you're right, we did have that talk, we've even had that talk internally and said, is that something we should do? And actually, I even brought that up when we had this discussion with Jake the other day. So we're, I think we're trying to explore all things, and to your point though, I almo, and I think I've said this before, I almost wish it didn't happen quite as quickly, because that timeline is short, you know, on it. As opposed to the fall town meeting, the special town meetings, when I think that I could have longer to put out smaller chunks of information. However, I also understand in telling the town administrators why that's probably not the best idea for us. And truthfully, if this isn't, if it's not accepted at this town meeting in, in the spring, then we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and say, okay, what are we going to do now? Is that, is that the answer, or do we try another tactic? Right now, if we do this, we'll have time. If we wait till the fall, probably not going to have time. So, you know, in all fairness too, and I, I agree, Leah, with what you're saying, people won't know the details, you're absolutely right on that. But again, in conversation with the town administrators, I said, like, everybody knows that this is potentially coming, you know, like, they might, but they don't know the salient details that I think that they need to know to say, oh yeah, all those windows and, they're all single pane, that's why it doesn't retain the heat. Or the grease trap doesn't meet the student population, oh, that's why it always backs up. You know, like, all those little things that are going to be expensive fixes if we try to go back after them, so. So yes, I, I'm hoping that at next meeting, I can roll something out for you to say, here's, and by then I'll have, send out my first, my first memo, and I will reach out to our good friends at the Chieftain Press. So I just wanted to echo that, Elaine's idea and what you're talking about too, Grace and the Chieftains, she's already talking about in the positivity column, you know, that the MSBA updates. So getting enough information to them, not that they have to do our work or Jake's work for us, but then seeing how they do this might give some insights on things that you could use. And so they would be, you know, the Chieftains would be doing their own work as journalists, but with the information, because, you know, again, we, we have people who could, who could do that work too on this level, but I think it could all work really well together. I completely agree with you, yeah. It's exciting, it's really exciting.
Just to throw another population in there, the alumni.
Oh, didn't even think about alumni.
Because they've been through the school. They know the problems that exist there, yeah. The cold in the winter, the hot in the summer, the leaky ceilings and everything else, and they're, you know, that could be a very, a very strong positive group.
You know, I give our students and staff so much credit at that building, and like I say, when, when that young man was talking about, you know, wearing his, his jacket into the classroom, and I was thinking, you know, as I was explaining, I think I told, shared the story last time, of, you know, the folks from New York going down to that locker room where all those jerseys were hanging up, and the smell was just so overpowering, and all, all the adults, as we're walking down, we're, you know, there are our children, you know, all the students, in and out and doing, you know, but all the adults were struggling with the odor that was down there. Our children are so resilient, it's just amazing. But I, I agree, I think that that's a really, that's an interesting target audience I didn't even think of.
So just want to bring it back to the amount of the appropriation. I know we don't have to make a decision on this tonight, but does anybody have any more thoughts or questions or information they're looking for?
Just thinking, perhaps not all feasibility studies are created equal, so maybe that amounts to the difference. I'm also noticing that there seems to be no correlation between the feasibility study cost and the cost of the building.
I noticed that as well. Yeah, I found that very interesting too, yeah. It was an interesting set of data points to look at, really.
Have we had any input from our towns on their thoughts on appropriations for the cost?
The amount?
Yeah.
No, because we've, and I think it's because we haven't had discussion, because we've all, always said, it's probably going to be between that 800 and 1.2 million. I think that that's kind of what we always thought, so I don't think we've had any, well, I know we haven't had any real discussion to say, this is the amount, or, you know...
Okay, but when that range has been put out there, there's been sort of a mild consensus that we're in the right ballpark?
That's probably, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe very quick to tell me if it was...
I would hope so, yeah.
Any other questions on that?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So, at least, so your recommendation is that we are going to target the Maytown meetings for approval for the funding, lending, for the...
For the feasibility study funding. We can't start it yet, but we can, we can get the funding in place.
And just playing somewhat devil's advocate here.
That's what we please do.
So you're, you're suggesting that we need a feasibility study, but, and if I hear you correctly, we're not entirely certain what it is that we're looking to do.
That's correct, because, actually, you're, you're spot on, so let me see if I can connect the dots so differently for you. So the feasibility study, we're not going to have any choice in the feasibility study, like, we have to have one done. So, and part of the rationale for that is because they would, during that process, they will offer likely more than one option for our three communities to discuss, to think on, to ponder. But it really depends when they get into the depth, when the feasibility, the folks that do the feasibility really get into the depths of that building and see what's really broken, what's really, I mean, we, we have a flavor, but they'll see it through their expertise, you know, their, their lens. And so, for example, they may come back, I don't think that this is what they would do, but they may come back and say, you can't do anything else with this building, you're going to, if you're going to do anything, it has to be new. They could, I, I don't think that that's what they're going to do, but they could. Or they could come back and say, well, here's option one, just take it down and build new, or option two is, you know, you clearly don't have science, appropriate science labs, you clearly don't have proper circulation and air handlers in your gymnasium and your locker rooms and that kind of thing. So maybe we just do a different design. So that's one of the reasons why you have the feasibility study done, so that it offers one or two options to you.
So you're looking at a range somewhere between 800,000 and 1.2 million?
That's what they have suggested previously, as, as, like, when I was going through the SOI process, is numbers just to keep in the back of your mind, that that's probably where it's going to be at. And the, when I saw this, this kind of said, yes, that's probably the ballpark, but I don't really know, because I really do want to go back now and connect with these folks, and for the very questions that have come up tonight, we don't want to get it wrong.
Well, that's my concern, because my, my fear is, is that, you know, I just, I'm like the doomsayer of this committee, you know, to be in front of town meeting and to say, all right, you're asking for X, tell us why, you know? And I, you know, I think we need to have a very clear understanding of what it is that we're doing and how we can justify that cost, because if we're saying that, because I, I know how, you know, these town meetings work, if you give them a range between 800,000 and 1.2 million, I know which option they're going to take, they want the 800,000, you know?
Absolutely. No, 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 I, I think, we don't go in with a range, like, I'm...
No, no, I realize that, yeah. I just want to make sure that, you know, that when it comes to town meeting, you know, that we're going to say, okay, because this uncertainty as to exactly what we're going to be doing as far as the, the monies are concerned, you know, we're going to say, okay, we're not certain, but the reason we can justify this amount is because of X, you know? And I, that's, that's my concern, because I, I think that one of the things that, you know, I'm listening to my colleagues, and they say, well, we can use the, you know, the school newspaper, and, you know, this is the school website, and we can talk to it. And again, the doomsayer of the committee, my fear is, is that oftentimes you'll get people who come to town meeting who are completely unequivocally disconnected from anything that goes on in the school district.
A large percent of our population.
And that, therein lies my fear, so I, you can see my fear of justice, so I just wanted to make sure that's what, where we're going with this.
And I couldn't agree with you more, and I think that we've also had that discussion around the table too, because I, I completely agree with you, the discussion we're having tonight is really focused on our, our school community population, but it's that other population, how do we, how do we get to them? How do we, you know, how do we reach those folks? So I, no, you're, you're spot on, you're thinking spot on. Other questions?
I should say, I think there's someone in the back of the room that would help us reach a different segment of the population.
We're just saying.
People who read the newspaper, yeah.
That's it for me then, for that, thank you.
Okay, so basically, this is going to go on the next agenda, and we will, I know to have warrants in Stowe close March 6th, so I'm assuming the other towns are similar, so this is something I would say we have one, maybe two meetings to kind of decide on, yeah, a date, you know, town meeting and what the appropriation amount would be, so. Okay. All right, Pat, welcome back.
So this is the results of operations for the month of November. I don't have December completed yet, for various reasons, I'm doing some projections, utilities, and some other things, it's taken a little bit more time. With the budget process, I just couldn't complete it.
And the preparation of, for the audit, the auditors are in?
I believe my auditors are, not my auditors, our auditors are in on Monday, so...
For this last year, so it's busy season in the world.
Very, very busy in my office right now. So does anybody have any questions about November's results of operations? As you can see, things are starting to change a little bit, after we've been, you know, in school for a couple of months. I don't think that there's anything that has changed significantly from the prior month, so...
In general, what's the most volatile account, is it facilities?
Facilities.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I'd say facilities and sped.
Sped too, yes, because as we've said in, in the past, you know...
It just changes all the time.
Changes daily.
All of the schools are pretty much stable. I make the assumption that they would spend everything down in their supply, you know, their site-based budgets. And again, I'll look at that in the spring, and if we make a determination that we need to freeze the budget, then...
So let me just speak to that for a minute here. When we freeze a budget, we freeze a budget for multiple reasons, and we've done it every year. Our administrators know that we do it, they know the time of year we do it, everybody knows we do it, so it's not a secret, like, we say, hey, we're just going to freeze the budget next, you know? We tell everybody in advance, and we're telling them even now, like, if there's any other expenditures that you've got out there that you would plan for this year, now is the time to do it. And that does a number of things for us. Initially, the, the first time we did it was just because our first year together, we said, we want to know exactly where we're at, we want this year to, year end to be smooth, and we didn't want a pile of, you know, extraneous bills or invoices coming in months after, whenever, we wanted it nice and tight. And that served us very well. The other thing it serves us is because that E and D number that we borrow, we need to make sure we've got that number to put back into E and D so that we can borrow it again, right? And the cycle that we just cannot seem to get off, no matter how hard we try. And so that's another reason why we've, we do that freeze, to make sure that we've got whatever has been borrowed from E and D, ready to foot, put right back in. So if you hear things like, well, gee, that's why they, you know, they freeze the budget So if you hear things like, well, gee, that's why they, you know, they freeze the budget to do this or that, those are the overarching reasons for a smoother year end. We know exactly where everything is, and that has worked incredibly well in our favor. And to make sure that we've got the E and D that we need to put back in for the next year. So, sorry, I just wanted to, I digressed.
So, does anybody have any questions? Okay. To move on to the treasurer's report, we have the month of November and December. You can see that they're getting to the end of the quarter there. Yes?
We get this every month. Of what good is it to us?
I think this was a part of...
Makes us know that we have money in the bank?
I think it's a part of the forensic audit, so that's all it was. And this is, and the school committee court decided that we would issue disclosure. That's all it is. Yeah, that's all it is, is fully, you're right, full disclosure.
It doesn't really indicate anything or tell us anything?
No. You're right.
Did we ever dodge $26,000 back last summer?
$26,000?
Remember, we advanced it to the town?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. Our towns have been very good about that, because they find themselves in strange positions. Yeah, so yes, we've always got it back, yeah.
Emergency capital repairs.
Yeah. Good question.
Questions on the treasurer's report?
And we want update on budget? We've got, let's do that just super quick.
I was gonna say, it's not?
It's not here, but it was part of her, and she'll do this every meeting too, to let you know what we're doing.
Only two more meetings. Three more meetings.
So on Saturday, we were at 6.85. And you can see the preliminary assessments for each of the towns.
Just scroll down there, Lena, please. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
And as of today, it's only been a couple of days.
It's only been a couple of days since we met.
We made some adjustments and, as you can see, it's starting to come down. Again, we're hoping for good numbers.
Good revenue numbers.
In a couple of areas. And then some decisions will be made about the asks, as Brooke had alluded to earlier in the meeting.
Yeah, we talked to pretty much all the principals today. And actually, you know, this is, this is a typical day for us in budget season. As Michelle and Pat have got their computers out on my desk and I'm there. And we've got the principals on the speakerphone and we're working through everything. So we never do anything in isolation. We always, you know, include them on everything. Because those, it's the schools right now where, when I talk about redeployment or I talk about whatever, we have to make sure that we're all in sync with that. And we don't know the intricacies of their staffing like they do. And so even when we, you know, when we went to them last week and said, you know, we need each school to cut 10,000, we didn't say where it was from. We said, you choose where that comes from and we'll honor that. And that's what we did. And so they all submitted theirs and then that was all reinputted back into the program, so. So that's where we sit right now. So we'll continue to work at it, of course, for the next two weeks. And by the time you come back, we'll have a new number for you next time. Any questions?
Thank you.
Plugging along with the budget, thank you. Subcommittee reports. Budget Warren has nothing?
Nope.
All right, personnel?
Personnel meeting a lot. It's a good thing. Personnel met yesterday, I think for the second or third time this month. And we continue to evaluate the communication plan without the superintendent. At our next meeting, we're gonna be inviting the superintendent and sort of share ideas of how we move forward with the plan.
And policy?
Hello. The policy subcommittee met Monday. And we discussed a few different things. Thing one is policy JIB, student voice and decision-making. So we're waiting for Brooke to kind of tee us up with the student leadership organization of the high school to just have maybe a conversation, I think. Kathy talked to you about that, or was going to talk to you about that, about helping us meet with Kim Erle, who I think is the leader over there.
Right, yes, and Kathy and I have had that discussion, just so you know, yeah, she did my job.
And so just meeting with them to converse about how, how they would like to see the school committee representative from the high school maybe evolve so that we can better incorporate student voice into our decision-making. We also talked about the school calendar and making it more culturally sensitive and including various religious observances so that the schools can plan around that to the best of their ability. So that's ongoing. Ideally, I mean, we could even just include like a list of the high holidays in each of the various religions on the calendar so that teachers can even see it, so they don't plan major field trips or things of that sort on those days. We also are in conversation with MASC about our harassment policy and how we can keep it not only in line with Mass General law, but also make it useful for our schools, considering all that we've experienced this year, and make sure that our sexual harassment policy is useful and appropriate for not only the adults in the building or employees, but the young adults in the building.
Thank you. Any questions for anybody about any subcommittee work?
Oh, I will say one final thing is that MASC has, I just got a bulletin that said, and I haven't talked to Kathy about this yet, but they passed down some guidance on citizen comment and how that policy should be renovated or tweaked just a little bit. So I imagine that at our next meeting, which is next month, we will converse about that guidance. Which, you know, they basically set policy for all the schools and I'm sure that we would adopt it and inform.
Yeah, I made a note for that for the next meeting. And then I have some CPAC events to announce. First, on Sunday, February 9th, there's gonna be a CPAC Parents Social at Slater's in Bolton from 5:30 to 8. That should be a good time. On Tuesday, February 25th, at Center School, there'll be What Parents Should Know About Executive Function Skills. That'll be a presentation with a guest presenter. And that is about how to help children develop the essential self-management skills that they need to achieve their goals, be productive. Call it executive functioning.
What was that?
Tuesday, February 25th, 7 to 9 p.m. at Center School. And then finally, on Wednesday, March 25th, at the auditorium at the high school, they're gonna do a movie screening and then an expert panel Q and A afterwards for the film Life Animated. It's a, it's a really cool story about a young autistic man who was unable to speak until he and his family discovered a unique way of communicating. And I won't give you any spoilers, but it's a really cool movie. So if anybody has any questions, you can certainly reach out.
I just had a comment, just wanted to point out the fact that the February 9th event was moved in deference to America's highest most religious holiday, which will be taking place this Sunday, which is the Super Bowl. It was really scheduled, I just want to clarify, it was originally scheduled for Super Bowl Sunday. There was some pushback from some of the parents who wanted to attend and said, well, we can't attend that event.
Put that on the calendar.
Yeah. So it was announced earlier, if any confusion, not that anybody's interested, but it was moved, so we, in deference to the Super Bowl.
Okay, now they know why the event space was probably really cheap. Okay, so those are the CPAC events, so thank you for listening. Any correspondence of need? All right, consent agenda. We have a motion?
I move to approve, to approve the January 29th, 2020 consent agenda, including the meeting minutes of January 15th, 2020, and the warrants of January 31st, 2020.
All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? All set, thank you. Items to be considered for next and future agendas. I've definitely got a few things on my list. There is the high school investigation, we're gonna have insurance updates. There'll be an update on the population review, the MSBA will be coming up, citizens' comments, guidelines. There's one thing in the parking lot on school start times that I think we can all agree is a logistically complicated issue. It's probably gonna be a series of discussions that we have. I don't think that we have enough information to even have the first set of those discussions. But if you have questions or information that you would want to see in order to have the discussion or start the discussion, start sending those to me. Yes?
I have something for consideration, and that is, and so guys, correct me if I'm wrong, from the other towns. I think that Lancaster and Bolton do Nature's Classroom. But does Stowe?
No. I'm not sure. I don't know if Stowe does anything in lieu of...
They did do Project Adventure, but isn't Nature's Classroom offsite or perhaps even overnight?
It is.
It is. It's a week, right?
Yep.
So I feel like there is an enormous disparity there for, for the children in Stowe who don't experience that.
Let me look into it. I'm not exactly sure, but let me look into it.
And then the other thing that is slightly connected to that, but a little different, is in talking with some parents who have recently seen their kids merge into the high school, wondering if we could do some thinking around ways to help that merger be a little bit more seamless. I know that for kids who play sports, it tends to be easier because they've been perhaps playing lacrosse with the other towns on similar teams for soccer, baseball, et cetera. But for kids who don't play sports, I assume that's a very large percentage. They are coming into this environment without any kind of programming that has been pre-done to mix the populations in meaningful ways, which I think other regional systems do do.
That's really interesting. I'll look into that as well.
Yeah, we get to know what the process is for our eighth graders and how they transition into high school.
We do, we do a lot of work in transition, but not the type of work that you're talking about.
Not like team building and things like that. There's nothing, I was actually really surprised. What I did see happen is, and I know this happened with Kyle Grady's school in particular, but it probably happened elsewhere, the Washington DC trip did an amazing job of helping that group of kids coalesce and feel like really strong together. And, but I would love to see that happen across the three towns prior to them going to school together. They do do one orientation a couple of days prior to school starting. That's very academic oriented, and my son said that there wasn't a lot of purposeful mixing.
Right. We'll look into it.
I'd just like to request, as I have in the past, sort of an ongoing update on where our high school is at with regards to culture and climate.
All right, what else you got? Anything?
You said the investigation.
Yeah, that'll be, definitely be on the agenda for the next meeting.
And may I dare ask another sensitive side question to that?
Why not?
Is, I imagine that whatever the results of that investigation are, that there will be implications for Mr. Domenico. When does that conversation, or would that conversation even come here? Is that something that you would just inform us of, Brooke?
So, so that's a really good question for a number of reasons. But let me, let me just put a couple of thoughts out there, first of all. And these are gonna seem random, but they're actually kind of all tied in. I mean, one of the things that we do at this time of year always is start to look ahead to staffing for the next year, right? So, I mean, to, to think that staffing is not on our horizon would be absolutely untrue. So we're already thinking ahead, you know, what is this gonna look like, what not? In terms of, you know, and I know I've said this to Kathy before too, I will be upset if there are things that could be said that I wasn't allowed to say during that time period. So I'm kind of curious to see, like, just as a bystander to all of this, because I'm not involved in it at all, how they're going to approach, how they, how you will approach being able to talk about personnel issues in a public forum when I wasn't allowed to talk about personnel issues in a public forum. So it's kind of a weird space to be in. But, so, so again, that's kind of random thought, so that's kind of over here. But my focus right now has to be looking at next year and what's going to happen. During this interim period though, just to be clear, I can't have any communication at all with Mr. Domenico. So I haven't had any communication with him since, actually, I think since the day he left. You know, so, and I can't until this wraps up. And only then can we make decisions based on whatever, whether there's anything negative or positive or whatever. I have to wait and see. So I'm at a total standstill, even though we are looking ahead and saying, what is this gonna look like? So, yeah, so there's lots of thinking going on right now. So it's, it's sensitive, but, but in all the normal ways it would be sensitive, you know? Because you just, you just can't talk about personnel in a public venue or even executive session. So I'm gonna be curious to know how that, like, I'm gonna learn from this because it'll be different than I've been, that's been ingrained in me through, even through this time period. You know, when you take your, for me, you take 100% of your advisement from your school committee's lawyer, not your own personal lawyer, your school committee's lawyer. So I don't know, like, I will learn too, as you will learn, what can be said, what can't be shared. Because right now, I think I know, but I, I could be vastly mistaken. So, I don't know, is that different, was that political enough?
To be continued.
To be continued, it really is to be continued. But just know that there's lots of discussion happening in the background. We're not saying it's non-existent. It's just that nothing can be done right now.
Yeah, it's awkward and it's sensitive. It is really important, but I think that all we can say right now is we don't know. I mean, I think with respect to that, we're also gonna have to pass it by our school committee attorneys, not just the attorney doing the investigation. But it seems like our law firm's gonna need to be involved in disseminating or, not disseminating, but, but helping us parse out.
Because you're gonna have to protect yourselves. I mean, as a school committee, you're gonna have to protect yourself here. And, and I understand, I, well, Joe, as you well know, since our lawyer's sitting at the table, you know, our lawyer friend's sitting at the table. But it's a, it's a very strange place to be in. And, you know, even if there is, and I'm not talking about this specific situation. So please don't hear that. But I mean, anytime you start to go out to look for anybody new in the month of April or, that's starting to get pretty late if you're trying, if you're trying to man any positions. You know, you really like to do your advertising for anything, like right now, like that's what the jobs are out there right now. So, so there's lots of food for thought here in where we find ourselves.
Anything else? All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
25.
All in favor?
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Brooke, I wanted to share a couple...